Good evening, calling this meeting to order at 7:16 PM. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the official role for this evening's meeting?
Uh, yes, I can. Director Mike Chang.
Here.
Director Khadijah Brown.
President.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Student Director.
Sorry.
Kailin Liao.
Here.
And President Anavasudev.
Presente. Thank you, Ms. Barrios. Now we will approve the agenda for this evening's meetings. Are there any requested changes? Oh, Director Shinowski, we forgot to call out Director Shinowski in the role. Director Jennifer Shinowski.
I'm here too.
Oh, she's, she's present online. Yeah, she's reading virtually. Thank you so much. And just remember, Ms. Barrios today, if for some reason I don't see her, please feel free to turn to her. I need to make sure that I can see Director Shinowski during any questions. Great. Now colleagues, we need to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any requested changes? See, none. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I approve. Alright, I move to approve, sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion was moved by Director Chang, seconded by Director Babbitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous for the vote. Um, when we have someone who is joining us virtually, we then must move to a roll call vote.
Okay, Director Shinowski, do you approve the agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, and then Ms. Barrios, do you want to do the roll call vote? Sure. Uh, Director Chang?
Yes.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Student Director?
Yeah, yes.
President Vasudev.
And President Vasudev.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Ms. Barrios. Uh, now we will report out from closed session. Vice President Brown, please report out from this evening's closed session.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this evening's closed session began at 5:39 PM. For item 3.1, the board heard an update and gave direction. For item 3.2.1, it was moved by Director Babbitt, seconded by President Vasudev, and the motion was voted yes by Directors Babbitt, Shinowski, Chang, and Vasudev, and Director Brown voted in abstention, voted to abstain from the vote. For item 3.2.2, the board heard and it heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.3.1, it was moved by Director Shinowski, seconded by Director Chang, and all board directors voted in favor. For item 3.3.2, it was moved by Director Chang, seconded by Director Shinowski, and all directors voted in favor. For item 3.3.3, was moved by Director Chang, seconded by Vice President Brown, and all directors voted in favor. And for item 3.4, the board heard an update. This ends the reading of the report from closed session. Thank you, President Vasudev.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. And now we will move on to comments from our superintendent and we give board more time.
Good evening, BUSD family. Uh, thank you all for joining us this evening. You will be surprised, but I'm going to be very brief in my comments this evening, aware that my board directors have many amazing things to share with you all and that we have a pretty packed agenda. Um, I do want to acknowledge that I see a number of folks in the room, but a whole lot of our BUSD educators. And so I just want to loud and proud. Um, I had the pleasure of being at Berkeley High School today and being with the babies whenever I'm having a hard day. And there are many. Um, and I'm just not feeling it. I go to school sites and I get to be with the babies and I get to be with you who serve our babies, and it brings me joy and reminds me of my why. So, not much to say to you except thank you for the hard work and the hard work that you do for our babies every single day. Okay, I told you, I'm gonna be brief. I hear my announcements. You ready? So I hope to see many of you tomorrow night at our Black History Oratorical Fest. It's, now listen, y'all can't woo everything I say, okay? Because it's gonna make it longer. It's actually, uh, five, let's woo at the end, how about that? Uh, it's happening tomorrow at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School Auditorium, which is located at 1781 Rose Street. It's gonna be at 5:30 PM. This year's Black History Oratorical Fest theme is Black Artists, and it encourages our students to present original or published speeches focused on voicing the beauty and power of black artists. If it's anything like last year's competition, you'll enjoy a variety of inspiring spoken word, speeches, and poetry performances from our extremely talented and brilliant students here in BUSD. Also, good job. Also, tomorrow is the Huerta Chavez Itlion Commemorative Period in Berkeley Community Celebration. That is also tomorrow at 5 o'clock. It's from 5 to 7 at Berkeley City College. Latinos Yoneros de Berkeley, UC Berkeley, Berkeley Community College, BUSD, and others have partnered for this community-wide celebration. It's focused on environmental justice and activism. BUSD observes March 21st to April 10th as the Seja Chavez, Dolores Huerta, and Larry Itlion Commemorative Period, one of the many ways we celebrate and affirm the rich histories of our, get ready, Chicano, Chicana, Chicanx, Filipina, Filipino, Filipanx, and Latina, Latino, Latinx communities. Did you guys see my video? I did the same thing in my video. Uh, we celebrate all of these rich and diverse cultures in our schools, and you can find more events on our district website. Friday, March 27th, is BUSD's Seja Chavez Day of Learning. It's not a day off, y'all. It's a day of learning. Not yet. On Monday, March 25th, right here in this boardroom, members of the Berkeley Unified School District's Reparations Task Force will hold a community engagement event to present an analysis of the Task Force Community Engagement Survey, which received more than 2,200 responses. We're looking forward to learning more about what they said, and we hope to see this room packed, so you can hear about the efforts and what they've learned so far and the conversation, where the conversation is in terms of providing reparations to our African-American students here in BUSD. Now, I know you're sad and it's hard to believe, but spring break is coming up. In less than two weeks, we will be off. From April 1st to April 5th, and we'll return back on Monday, April 8th. I wanted to make sure that our families know that our middle school students can enjoy an active week of swimming, sports, arts, games, field trips, and more over the break. Free. Y'all heard me? Free, with the City of Berkeley. This program is open to 6th to 8th graders, and there's more information on the back table about this and other programs for our middle schoolers in particular. It's done in partnership with the city as well as Berkeley Yap. Um, I wanted to let you all know that I know that some folks are gonna get out of here after public comments, but I always invite you to stay. We have a pretty engaging agenda this evening, one of which is a focus on our strategic plan. We are developing a strategic plan here in BUSD that really talks about what our priorities are, what our pillars are, and how we're gonna move to enabling and inspiring our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. So I do hope that you stay and hear about that. And then finally, I just want to say thank you again to my educators, to our educators who are in the room. I see you and love you for all the hard and hard work that you do for the babies. I said it twice, I know, double time.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll now move to, uh, the public comment component of our agenda. Before we begin, I would like to remind you of our decorum expectations during this and all parts of tonight's meeting. No person shall disturb the order of this meeting. Such behavior includes, but is not limited to booing, hissing, creating or participating in any physical disturbance, speaking out of turn in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public, or approaching the dice without permission. As Ms. Chaita's already mentioned, Ms. Barrios already mentioned, uh, there are two opportunities for public comments at each meeting, now and at the end of the meeting. If you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of tonight's meeting. You may also email us your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during the public comment. Board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes during the public comment and can follow up with the speaker after the meeting. These are hybrid meetings, so we'll have public commenters in the boardroom and online. We've designated about 20 minutes to our in-person speakers and about 10 minutes for any online speakers. Anyone wishing to make public comments should raise a virtual hand now so Ms. Chaita's can, so Ms. Barrios can organize. And when you do raise your hand, if you're a student online, please indicate that you're a student when you raise your hand in your name. That would be very helpful. Each public commenter will have about a minute to speak, depending on the amount of speakers. We have a lot of speakers tonight, so we will start with our student speakers, and I may, um, you know, I'll call out the different themes that the students want to speak on, and we may have, um, a limited number of speakers per theme. Uh, so time your comments accordingly to one minute. Uh, I'll call your name in the order of speakers per agenda item, and, uh, to keep things moving, I ask that the speaker who's next in line come forward and wait near the mic. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. If I mispronounce your name, please repeat your name correctly, so we can get that, um, correct. And we'll now begin our public comments with those in person. So I'm gonna start off with our student speakers. Uh, first, uh, one speaker for vote 16. The two cards that I have are for Ally Forbush and Eva Levinson. So if one of you, um, either Ally or Eva could come and speak on this topic, that'd be great. You can choose who wants to speak for a minute, and then we'll move to trans students Sydney Faes or Zoe Urbel.
Good evening, board and superintendent. My name is Eva Levinson, and I'm a sophomore at Berkeley High. I'm here today to ask you to put vote 16 on the school board agenda and pay all costs associated with it while getting it done by November elections. In 2016, the City of Berkeley passed Measure Y-1, allowing 16-year-olds to vote for the school board. It has been eight years. I find it ironic that we are able to make recall election ballots, but we are unable to enact a new ballot for 16-year-olds. Special election ballots are not new. First, I would like you to place vote 16 on your school board meeting agenda so that we can discuss and get community, and get a community update. Second, I would like you to pay all costs associated with it, um, so that we can vote for you by November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is trans, the trans student experience. We have Sydney Faes or Zoe Urbel or, uh, Emma Kanishbacher. So if you could choose one speaker for trans student experience, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Sydney Fair, and I am here with Gaia. You, the school board, hold these public meetings to obtain a window into the lives of the people you are affecting with your policies and decisions. I am here to give you a chance to hear the voices of some such people. Here are two anonymous student reports on the Berkeley High Gender Neutral Bathrooms. February 27th. Tried to use the A-Building Gender Neutral Bathroom, couldn't because there was a massive puddle of pee blocking my route to the toilet. Someone had written a warning of this puddle on a paper towel and left it as a sign on the floor, meaning it had been there for some time. February 20th. I don't feel supported for being trans. I use the GH Gender Neutral Bathroom every lunch period and wait for 10-plus minutes every day. The doors and walls are constantly covered in transphobic graffiti. People are in the bathrooms for excessive amounts of time vaping and even having sex. How am I supposed to feel?
Thank you so much for your comments. And if you were not, if you are not able to finish your comments tonight, please email us at boardofed@berkeley.net. Next, we have Ralph Walker to speak about the BHS Stadium, uh, followed by Kareem for Sunrise BHS.
Good evening, y'all. I'm Ralph Walker. I'm a youth track coach from Alameda. I used to have it in Berkeley. I'm here to try to get the track renamed after Willie White, the number-one high school track coach ever. He had the number-one track team at Berkeley High School, 1980 and 81. The number-one track team in the United States, and there's no mention of him at, at all at Berkeley High School. It's not even a, they named the track, the stadium, Jackett Stadium, instead of naming it Willie White, and that was wrong. So I want to know, what's the process to get that changed? Google up Willie White, Berkeley High School Track, 1981, and read, and read what, what they, what they talk about. He had the number-one track team in the United States, 1981. The first one ever to win boys and girls state championships at the same state, at the same state meet. No one ever did it then, before that, ain't nobody did it since. So another problem, I'm getting discriminated against from Buck, at Buckley High School. Two years in a row, that facility manager told me that for safety reasons, can't nobody use.
Thank you very. Thank you very much, Mr. Walker, for your comments. If you did not get to finish your comments, please email us at boardofed@berkeley.net. Next, we have Kareem. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Everyone gets one minute right now. Next, we have Kareem from Sunrise BHS. So you have one minute. You, you can choose whoever you want to speak on this topic.
Hello, uh, my name is Kareem Elise, and I am speaking in favor of the Green New Deal for schools for BUSD. I wish I had learned that we do not have the climate crisis under control. That compared to the amount of action necessary, we are doing nothing to address it. I wish I had learned about the massive societal changes that are necessary to avert the worst effects of climate change. I wish I had learned about greenwashing, about the lies fossil fuels companies put forth that have stopped climate action for decades. The purpose of science classes is to educate students about the world around them, and a world severely damaged by climate change is the world that the young people of today, myself included, will have to live in. So, and we need to educate them about it. So I ask you to sign a Green New Deal for Schools, including integrating climate curriculum into all classes at BUSD.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, on the ES curriculum, we have Lua or Amelia Maldonado Olsen, I think. Uh, Lua or Amelia on ES curriculum. I have one minute.
Um, good evening. I am a Jewish BIPOC student at Berkeley High. Did you know the Lone Ranger was a real person and that he was black? Do you know about Seneca Village, a former thriving black community? These are our stories and are here, are not told, to be told by us. The purpose of Ethnic Studies is to center BIPOC histories told in the first person. Ethnic Studies was fought for because dominant European cultures didn't feel comfortable with our stories. But discomfort is never a reason to not teach a truth, a truth like the Nakba. Ethnic Studies focuses on problems related to ethnicity, including institutionalized violence, land conquest, and discrimination. Ethnic Studies aims to answer questions like what is the origin of racism or Islamophobia? Liberated Ethnic Studies was vetted of BIPOC scholars, was vetted by BIPOC scholars, written in the first person and chosen for an intelligent reason. BUSD, let's create thinkers, thinkers who know that my liberation is directly tied to yours. Give our teachers a fair contract.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have a lot of comment cards, uh, for BFT negotiations. So I'm just gonna call a couple people. Rui Donna Allen Sanchez, followed by Emma Hour, followed by Emma Holtzapi, followed by Josh Austin, and then Angela Coppola.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vidiana Allen Sanchez, and this is my 14th year as a classroom teacher. I taught with San Francisco Unified for 12 years, but here in Berkeley, I truly feel a sense of belonging and purpose. I love the community, the diversity of the students, and the support from my colleagues. However, like many of my fellow educators, I'm impacted by the rising cost of benefits and the challenge of supporting my family of four in today's increasingly expensive world. Balancing the demands in home life is no easy feat, especially when worries and about healthcare weigh heavily on my mind. When working in San Francisco, all dental coverage premiums were covered 100% by the district. I was surprised when I came here and saw that it's more than $100 every month just for basic dental coverage. Many of my colleagues are passing up on health maintenance because of these high out-of-pocket costs. That is why I stand before you today, urging the board and the district to treat educators with the dignity and respect they deserve. We've come a long way, however, we need to be supported with fair and sustainable health benefits. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening, school board members. Good evening, superintendent. My name is Emma Hour, and I'm a newly hired teacher to Berkeley High School. Currently, there's no other school that I'd rather be employed at than Berkeley High School because I love working in this district. I was excited to be hired to my position, and even more excited to be contracted with benefits and a salary. However, this excitement was stifled upon receiving my first paycheck. Over 35% of my total earnings is taken by deductions, the largest of which is for health insurance benefits for myself and my spouse. Coming from another district where my benefit costs were covered by my employer, I was shocked at how much of my take-home pay was going to benefits in this district. Over the last few years, food prices have increased. Housing prices have greatly increased, and our wages need to be able to cover these increases or teachers will be getting poorer each year. This is the district that I would love to spend my entire career in. I have desires to start a family, but I don't know if this is possible within BUSD as things now stand. Please raise our wages to a sustainable level.
Hello, my name is Noah Leroy Wynn. I use they/them pronouns. I am a second-year teacher at Berkeley High and art teacher at Berkeley Independent Study, the union rep for the Visual and Performing Arts Department, and I run the Gender Expansive Group at Berkeley High School. On top of that, I'm currently clearing my credential through the induction program. I know that sounds like a lot of hats to wear, because it is. While I'm very happy to be part of these different parts of our school district, I got into most of them because it was the only way to make enough money. If I did not work at two different school sites, I would not be able to afford the health insurance our district provides, which I use to access gender-affirming care. Almost 50% of teachers in America quit in their first five years. For every teacher behind me, there's another person who has made the choice to leave our profession. I love being an educator, and I hope to teach in Berkeley for a long time, but it, with healthcare and cost of living rising, I worry about burning out. I am asking the school board to support increasing compensation so that I can make it to year five. Our students deserve to have experienced educators who they know will be around for them next year. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, my name is Emma Holtzapple, and this is my fifth-year teaching, fourth grade in the district. Starting my teaching career on the cusp of the pandemic presented significant shifts and challenges for students, families, and schools. However, it also highlighted the importance of our health. Upon turning 26 and leaving a parent's fully-funded medical benefits through CalPERS in the Cal State system, I was made rudely aware of how BUSD did not offer the same support for its educators as other public service jobs provide. I was left with the choice of paying almost $400 a month to switch to Kaiser and look for an entirely new, new set of medical professionals, or pay over $500 a month to keep the doctors I was already seeing. As someone lower on the pay scale, this is a significant amount of my paycheck. My colleagues with families are paying over $1,200 a month. As educators who continuously show up for our students and families, we deserve to feel that we can take care of ourselves without having to sacrifice meeting our own basic needs. I love teaching, and I love my students, but at some point, the costs will be too high.
Good evening. My name is Diane Kung. This is my ninth-year teaching at Berkeley High School. Just earlier this month, I had a week where I attended four IEP SST meetings. Three of them were in one single day during my off-duty time. That day, I spent my entire lunch in an SST and managed to wolf down a handful of pretzels before jumping right into teaching my fourth period. Then, after teaching my last period for the day, I attended an IEP meeting during my prep. Following that meeting, I left campus and managed to pick up my six-year-old daughter from her after-care program before logging into my final IEP meeting of the day, which was held on Zoom. I helped my kid with her homework while waiting for my turn to speak. Now, you can say that I didn't have to attend all these meetings, but all three of the students in which these meetings were about were struggling immensely in many of their classes. Furthermore, I deeply cherish any minute that I get to spend interacting with parents and other staff members in collaboration with each other. Each year, I attend roughly 15 or more IEP SST or 504 meetings, showing up early to school, staying late if I have to. I've definitely given up my lunch hour too many times.
Thank you for your comments. If you have additional comments, please email us at boardofed@berkeley.net. Next, uh, speaking on the topic of transportation, we have Sean Jackson, followed by Joe Daca.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Jackson. I've been the dispatcher at transportation for 11 years. My brothers and sisters of transportation are here tonight to talk about three things. To advocate for the unfreezing of the two bus driver positions, a more competitive living wage for drivers to increase recruitment, and to dispel the myth that our department has an absentee issue. Over the years, I've seen an increase in ride times for students. We have TKs and kinders on the bus for more than an hour in the afternoons. Let me say that again, TKs, four- and five-year-olds on the bus. Sylvia Mendez routes are extremely long in the morning and in the afternoon because of the open zones. With more drivers, we could serve Berkeley students and support the athletic department by providing low-cost transportation to sporting events, saving thousands of dollars for the district. For, um, excuse me, for the past four years, the department has start short drivers every day, not due to, uh...
We also have Joe Daca, speaking about transportation.
Hold up. Brett. You got a more. Just support Joe.
My name is Joe Baca. I've been employed in the school district for 30 years as a school rest driver. I'm number one in seniority. I've seen numerous changes in transportation. The management has said we have a problem with absenteeism. We don't have a problem with absenteeism. We have a problem with labor. With, bus drivers are basically truck drivers. We have the same license. There's a shortage of drivers throughout the nation. So the problem isn't with absenteeism, it's with, it's with the labor. Uh, I got 100 and, 100-plus days of personal sick leave. Every time I use it, I get questioned about using it. 80% of the leave that I've taken has been backed by a doctor's note. So I don't know what the issue is. I keep telling, being told to fill out NALA paperwork. I don't need to. I shouldn't have to. I got 108 days on, or over 100 days on the books. Right now, 30 years ago when I was hired, I was bus number driver number 43. We're down to 19 drivers, and keep this in mind, the top 10 could retire at any time.
Thank you very much. So we have about, thank you very much. We have about two minutes left of, of in-person comments, so I'm gonna call Nancy Conse, and then followed by Nadia, um, from the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee. So we'll start with Nancy Conse. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
No worries. Hi, it's Shay. Hi. Am I sorry? Okay, good evening, school board members and superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Nancy Conse. I'm one of the school counselors at Berkeley High and a Jewish daughter of Holocaust survivors. I'm deeply saddened by all of the deaths and atrocities happening in the Hamas-Israel war. I support teaching about this war in our history and ethics studies classes. However, the curriculum that I've seen, as well as the demeanor around campus, is biased, as demonstrated by the signed letter to the board stating that teachers advocate for Palestinian rights in their classrooms. It must be fully fact-based. In classrooms, there are Palestinian flags, imagery on walls, student artwork, and books on shelves that portray only one side of this tragic historic biblical conflict, the Palestinian side. As a Jew, this visually and wordlessly tells me that I am not valued, that my unique views regarding the that my unique views regarding this complex issue do not matter, and some do not take students' disclosures of antisemitism they face seriously. Instead, they characterize the ADL Brandeis complaint as slanderous. I urge you to listen.
Thank you, Nancy, for your comments. Now we'll move on to Nadia from the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee, and then we'll move on to online comments.
Can I ask a question? So am I doing public comment or the committee report?
A public comment.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, so my name is Nadia Taylor, and I am a member of the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee. I'm also a preschool educator of teachers, and the first thing I want to say is that it's really important for us to help our teachers be able to teach controversial topics, because our children are gonna need to be able to learn how to do that in order for our world to continue to move forward. So we wanted to just give a brief background identifying that as a member of the committee for two years, we did go through a very public and very complex process to end up recommending liberated ethnic studies. We had voices of students. We have voices of parents. We have voices of community members. We have members also of the Jewish community as part of that advisory committee. Students have identified that they wish they had this curriculum from beginning till now, and so I think we need to listen to their voices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to our online comments. We'll start with the student, who has their hand raised up, student Hector Leon Alba, followed by Elaine Stelton.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you, Hector.
Hello, my name is Hector Leon Alba, and I am a senior in Bridge. I want to thank the district and the board for supporting this program. I'm proud to be able to say tonight that 27 of the Bridge seniors who applied to four-year colleges have now been accepted to at least one school. I applied to six CSUs personally, and I was accepted to all of them. Because of the critical support Bridge provides, my classmates and I have every option open to us this spring. The seminar, a part-time Bridge counselor, supports us absolutely. It's absolutely necessary. I would have not been able to get the amount of help I needed without her role in the Bridge. My Bridge teacher, Ms. Yuris, helps me stay on top of my homework. I have had lots of absences because of health and family issues, and I'm going to lie as a public security ADHD. It's hard for me to focus, and I put things off at the last second. She helps me keep me on track, and Ms. Luxer arranges Zoom quizzes for me and texts me and my mom constantly to help me get my things done. You know, it's hard for us all. We hope that you and the 142 Bridge students and the 75 kids on the waiting list, we hope you please continue to fully fund our program. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector. Next, we have Elaine Stelton, followed by Hillary.
Hello, good evening. I would like to cede my time to Nancy Conse, who is in the room, the high school counselor.
Thank you so much. I believe Ms. Conse already spoke. She invited in-person public comment. Is there anyone else to cede your time to?
Elana Pearlman, if she's in the room.
Yes, we have Ms. Pearlman online, so we can ask Ms. Barrios to promote. Is she in here in person? Oh, she's here in person and online. So you can have your comment in person. I want to first acknowledge our brave, courageous Jewish students, who in the face of rampant unchecked district-wide antisemitism, continue to share their stories and speak out against Jew hatred at Berkeley Unified. In 2024, Berkeley Jewish students are being called kikes, lying dumbass genocide lovers, and dirty Jews. That is happening. Please don't say bullshit to that. Please, okay, I'm sorry. And children are watching, so let's watch our language. Any educator who has the audacity to stand before this room of students, families, administration, and deny the experiences of these Jewish students is a moral stain on this entire district. Jewish and Israeli families continue to be harassed, just like tonight, gaslit and ridiculed at these school board meetings, which is why most have chosen not to subject themselves to this toxicity any longer. So I'm speaking on behalf of family silence by bullying to remind this board that the loudest voices in the room do not represent all Berkeley Unified families and teachers. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pearlman. Next, we'll move on to Hillary. Again, just a reminder, this is the online portion of public comments. We're here to give public comment. It's for the online portion. Hillary? President Vasilev, Hillary declined. Okay, we will move to Val. Val, can you unmute yourself for a public comment?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you so much. Dear Board, I'm a mom, I'm a woman, and I'm a Zionist Jew. During my college years, I majored in psychology. Some learnings involved exploring how a nation as vast as Germany succumbed to Nazi ideology. We scrutinized studies such as the Stanford Prison Experiment conducted by Professor Zimbarda and the Milgram Study of Obedience. These findings left our class astounded, with every single student believing they would be strong enough to withstand the pressure. As educators, I implore you to reflect on these studies and decipher the relevance in today's society and the power teachers have as authority over children. The discrimination faced by Jewish children on institutional level is alarming. Why should they receive any less than their peers? It's imperative that we remain vigilant against the resurgence of 1930s and 1940s hate, such as anti-Zionism, which is today's Nazism. I'm deeply troubled by the current societal trends.
Thank you for your public comment. If you did not finish your public comment, you can email us at boardofed@berkeley.net. Next, we will move on to, I think Hillary raised her hand again, so we'll move on to Hillary. Hillary, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. I was having some connection issues. I'm here once more just to ask that you please reconsider severing your relationship with liberated ethnic studies model curriculum consortium and put an immediate hold on the unapologetically biased Israel-Palestine lesson being taught at Berkeley High. This is not to say we should stop ethnic studies, as you'll hear many tonight suggest in their pleas. We're not saying that. No one, I haven't ever heard anyone say it. I've been coming to these meetings for the past six months. But it is to say that we need to create a framework for teaching ethnic studies in a way that aligns with the California Ed Code and BOC policies on bias in the classroom. This needs to be developed with oversight, not behind closed doors, and I don't think it should include members of the Arab Resource and Organizing Center whose interest is the dismantling of the only Jewish country in the world as input into this curriculum. Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East, but I doubt any of your students would know that. Please, this is not, this is not teaching our kids to think. We are right now indoctrinating our students. We want to teach them critical thinking.
Now, we will move on to former councilmember Cheryl Davila, followed by, if you could rename yourself Zoom user, that would be great. So, former councilmember Cheryl Davila.
I'm here in the room, so thank you for taking my hand. We need to teach Palestine. We need to stop listening to Zionists. Zionism is racism, which is equal to hate. Y'all should know better than this. People, Zionists, are taught to hate at a very young age. They were taught to hate Palestinians. They were taught.
Please, please follow our decorum rules, former councilmember Shavelan.
I'm talking to everyone!
Please pause the clock. I just want to remind everyone of our decorum rules, and we're being respectful of our speakers, and there's children in the room and children watching online. So please, Councilmember Davila, you can finish your comments. Ms. Barrios is going to reset the clock for you, and please don't interrupt the commentators. Thank you.
Reset it for what time?
27 seconds. Thank you, Vice President.
So they're taught to hate, and you know, we're going through a genocide. People are dying. Children are dying. Pregnant women are dying. They're not able to, they're having children that are dying. Everyone is being killed by, just because they're Palestinian, for no other reason. It's important to teach the history of the, sadly, the racism and all the things that have gone on in this world. To keep it, you know, in the closet and not be taught is a travesty.
Thank you, former councilmember Davila. If you have additional comments, please email us at boardofed@berkeley.net.
President Vasilev. President Vasilev.
I see we have a student online, and I promoted her to panelist, Melissa. That'll be our last public comment, then, the online student, and then we'll move on because time is up. So, students, and again, students, just a reminder, if you're making comments online, if you could please indicate at the beginning of the public comment period that you're a student, that would be really helpful. All right, Ms. Barrios, promote the student, and that will be our last online public commenter.
She might have logged off.
I think we have one more student, Julio Gonzalez, that is a student online. Okay, that will be the last comment. And again, if you're online, this is for online comment. This will be the last comment, last student comment.
No, you're good, you're good. My name is Julio Gonzalez. I'm a high school student at Berkeley High, and I'm here to stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people who are being genocided as we speak. I'm also very happy to say that last week, over 500 students came out to stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people and to demand that our teachers have the right to teach Palestinian history. We ask you that you listen to us, that you listen to us students, that you listen to our teachers, and that you fight hate as we should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Julio. Now we will move on to union comments, followed by our district committees. So Ms. Barrios, do we have any union comments tonight? Yes, we do. BFT? I think BCC, I see BCC getting up first. Would it be okay, President Meyer, if we called BCC?
All right, good evening, Board. Berkeley Council of Classified Employees has been working diligently to understand the layoffs that affects our members. A question that keeps being asked is, with Berkeley High School being approximately a third of our district, and there are essential positions being considered for possible layoffs, which will impact 100% of our students. If these positions are laid off, what actions does BUSD intend to enact upon in order to address the loss of those services? Where will the work go? BHS must have OCI, restorative justice, and family engagement. These services are essential to the students, vital to the families, and important to staff. We need more IAs in the classrooms. These are the positions that are not only supporting the teachers, but in a lot of situations, actually teaching the students, supporting them emotionally and making sure they are in a safe environment every single day. Our IAs are instructors. We know that safety comes first, so we ask that question again on why we would even consider laying off positions that support safety for our students. BCC has been advised that we understand none of these layoffs may happen, and of course, that is what we want. The superintendent and assistant superintendent did say they are trying to stay away from personnel and programs directly affecting our students. However, looking at the positions that received the March 15 notices, they all do directly affect our students. The second interim budget report was shared at the March 15 SPEC meeting. It does look like the district is trying to go other routes in hopes of not cutting classified staff. However, one of those proposals was to freeze bus drivers. Again, this affects the safety of our students, because we already do not have enough bus drivers, and our TK and kindergartners are being kept on the buses longer than they should. In addition, we would like you to please understand that BUSD has hired a substantial number of contractors on a continuous basis. While BCC is told that the hiring process takes time, well, it's been months since we've been hiring, and contractors are still here. Could it be that contractors are siphoning away classified jobs? That's the perception we have been given, and now here we are with layoffs. Let me remind you that contracting out classified jobs during a layoff means that the contractor should go first, that it flies in the face of respecting classified employees. Contract workers performing the same job in the same manner as a unilateral act on face. We spent approximately over a million on contractors coming in, replacing BCC classified work, maybe more or maybe less. It is important to note this is a big chunk where the contractor should be eliminated so BCC can do their own work and not have to go through the stress of receiving layoff notices or vacancies not being filled in a timely manner. Please remember, we are all stakeholders, and the mission is in the best interest of the students. And since I have a minute and 51 seconds left, I am going to finish off Sean Jackson's from Transportation speech. Thank you very much. So she left off saying that a staff member was assigned that route every day. I have conducted many bus driver interviews, and on the ongoing complaint is the starting wage. The candidates were an excellent fit for our department, but would decline the offer in the end. Due to the low wage, our new driver who accepted the offer complained that he was taking a huge pay cut. The only reason he accepted because it was closer to his home. As for absenteeism at transportation, absenteeism is defined as the practice of regularly staying away from work without good reason. The drivers have all received their evaluation, and everyone received a satisfactory or above. We have at least 16 drivers and staff members that have 40-plus days of sick time. As we all understand, that means days rolling over year after year. We do not have an absenteeism problem. What we do have is a lack of bus drivers. Our manager is currently on intermittent family leave now, and we support her. We would also like to send support when, if needed. In conclusion, we need those positions filled, not frozen, and a more enticing living wage that will make people want to drive for BUSD. Please don't believe that we stay away from work without good reason. We take our jobs seriously. We are the first people to greet students in the morning and the last they see in the afternoon. If any board member would like to have a more in-depth conversation with transportation, they would love to chat. Thank you.
Thank you, BCC. Are there any other unions? President Meyer?
Hello, Berkeley School Board Directors and Superintendent Ford Morte. I am Matt Meyer, president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I'll start off just by acknowledging all the hard work that went into the successful passage of Measure H. Nicole Chabot, Regina Dragoya, and Jennifer Shinnalsky as campaign chairs steered this measure to a massive victory with the support of all of our volunteers. I know that Kathy Fleming, along with other district-level administrators, did a lot of work getting this measure ready for the ballot. BFT members gave up their weekends and afternoons to walk door-to-door and make phone calls so that such an important measure that supports public education passed. We can't forget our voters who consistently turn out and vote for public education in Berkeley. It was truly a community effort and one we should celebrate. We have come to the board meeting today after our long workday and staff meetings, because it is important that our governing body hear directly from our educators. It is easy for those not in the classroom to forget the time and energy that is put into each day working with our young people to make sure each student gets the best education possible. The board focuses, as it should, on the big-picture decisions that impact our schools. What is sometimes lost is that behind all the debates and decisions are 1,000 educators trying to make this profession work. This is why we have chosen educators deserve dignity as a theme for our contract negotiations. As a new BUSD parent, I personally have even more perspective on the incredible As a new BUSD parent, I personally have even more perspective on the incredible work that goes into each hour of my child's day, and my family has benefited from all the uncompensated hours and incredible energy that we receive from our daughter's teacher. I think about this a lot. Has BUSD set up our educators for success? Have they made this a district a place where teachers will want to build careers? Do our current contractual agreements make this district one where we can work with dignity? Unfortunately, there is much room for improvement, and if we don't improve, we will continue to lose valuable educators. Our neighboring districts, even when facing higher declining enrollment and budget reductions bigger than ours, have managed to figure out ways to make sure their employees were compensated fairly. Here are some examples of what it means to be treated with dignity. To be treated with dignity means that we pay people for the work they do, especially directly supporting students. Unlike districts, we, unlike other districts, we currently do not compensate our educators for IEP, 504, and SST meetings after school where attendance is necessary. These meetings can run hours after the workday is over, and having educators able to participate directly serves our students and meets legal obligations. To be treated with dignity means that if the district does not pay us on time or accurately, that they resolve the issue within five days. If they cannot, our employees should receive interest for income that has been delayed. To leave our employees hanging, sometimes for months or even years, is essentially wage theft. To be treated with dignity means that when we decide to start or expand our families, our pay would adequately cover our increased out-of-pocket health expenses and be able to pay our bills, rent, and food during the time we are on chowdering leave. We should not have new parents financially scraping by because of a birth or adoption of a child. To be treated with dignity means that our adult school educators will not have arbitrary limitations placed on the number of hours that they can work, especially when there are open positions. To be treated with dignity means that when our educators are expected to put in assessment data and write narratives for report cards, the district provides dedicated time to do so. To be treated with dignity means that our district recognizes how difficult it is to stay in this profession with our current compensation and prioritizes the retention of our educators. I know contract negotiations can be a fraught process, but I also know that everyone in this room is pulling in the same direction and working towards the same goal, to provide the best possible education for Berkeley's young people. My hope, our hope, is that by centering the dignity of our educators, our educators in turn can center the dignity of our students. I look forward to all of our conversations and resolving of these key issues at our negotiations table. Thank you.
What do we want? Fair contract. When do we want it? What do we want? When do we want it? What do we want? What do we want? What do we want? What do we want?
Thank you to our labor partners. Next, we will have committee comments. Do we have any committee comments, Ms. Barrios? Yes, we have a couple committees here.
We gave them two.
Okay, I think we'll start with our audit committee.
Good evening, President Vasilev and Board of Directors and Superintendent.
One second, I was going to tell folks in the room, if you could keep the noise down so we could hear our committee comments, that would be much appreciated. Thank you very much. And it, I think folks are exiting, so if you want to wait one minute and then we'll close the door so we can properly hear you. We're the last one to exit, if you could please close the doors, that would be much appreciated. Director Albeck, could you help me close the door? Thank you very much, you, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you, good evening again. A little change of pace, we'll talk about audits. Dry, but nonetheless, very important. So my name is Isaiah Roter, and I'm a member of the district's audit committee. The other members of the committee are Lori Snowden and Dan Lindheim, Director Babbitt and Director Chang. We come to you each year as the audit committee. We meet with the district's auditor and assistant superintendent, and then we report to you. We also review the adopted budget, the interim budgets, and the unaudited actuals. Our goal is to review the district's financial condition, internal controls, and record keeping. The committee met with the auditor and assistant superintendent Follinsby on March fourth to audit, to review the audit for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The auditor will be presenting his report to you later tonight's meeting. The auditor provided an unmodified opinion, and that's the highest standard of assurance that the auditing profession provides. In addition, the auditor confirmed that the district has met its three, or did meet, its three percent reserve requirement, which is mandated by the state of California. As part of its audit each year, the auditor reviewed whether the district had met both California and federal program requirements. The audit showed that all federal requirements were met. There were two findings involving compliance with state requirements. Both were fairly technical, and neither had a fiscal impact. The first finding involved before and after-school attendance reporting. A total of ten attendance days throughout the school year were misreported across all sites. This was due to a clerical error and will be corrected going forward. The second finding involved the requirement to certify the adequacy of textbooks and instructional materials by the eighth week of school. This did not happen until the ninth week of school. Although there is no fiscal impact, the state may be imposing a penalty for late certifications beginning this year. The audit committee recommends that educational services calendar this requirement and ensure that the certification is timely submitted. The auditor made no material adjustments to the unaudited actuals as submitted by the district. However, there were three matters that did not rise to the level of materiality and were considered waived adjustments. The first was an allocation to the self-insurance fund for unfunded pension liability. The second involved an unrealized loss in cash held in the county treasury. And the third had to do with booking the revised actuarial liability in the district's self-insurance fund. None of these adjustments involve the general fund and won't have an impact on your budgeting process. Lastly, you may recall that last year, there was a finding with respect to overcounting the district's unduplicated students. The error resulted from the district switching to the escape computer system. The auditor verified that the process is now without error. The district has appealed to the Department of Education for a waiver of the requirement to repay the state. The appeal is still pending. As you can see from this report, the financial reporting and record-keeping requirements for school districts in California is unbelievably detailed and complex. We owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to Assistant Superintendent Follinsby and her entire staff for their diligence and competence. That's my report this year. Thank you very much. Be happy to answer questions if I can.
Thank you so much. And colleagues, does anyone have any questions before we move on to the next? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to see if there are any other committees that are here to comment? Sure, you have five minutes.
Sorry, that's why I was confused from before. So I'm here on behalf of the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee. Again, my name is Nadia Taylor, and I am a Berkeley USD parent of a fifth grader and a former BUS student, and I have been a member of the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee for the last two years. ESAC, the acronym, consists of a diverse group of students, community members, caregivers, teachers, and staff. Over the past two years, we have reviewed student surveys and feedback from community listening circles, used this community feedback to provide recommendations for the development of third, fourth, fifth, eighth, and ninth grade curriculum studies. We actually went through a process where we vetted other organizations to find the one that we felt would best partner to work with our teachers in the process of co-creating pilot curriculum. We also helped to draft the district's definition of ethnic studies and reviewed a pilot curriculum co-created by LESMC and Berkeley teachers. And so really what stood out for us in particular was the repeated commitment that students wished that they had been exposed to ethnic studies much earlier in their schooling and community, in their schooling. And also, community members had a lot of enthusiasm for more ethnic studies curriculum across elementary, middle, and high school. We used a transparent consensus protocol through the process, and last year, we enthusiastically recommended the contract that is currently in place with Liberated Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum Consortium. Because they are hands-down the best teachers and researchers in their field, they offer a true collaboration with our teachers, and so they are building upon the skills that our outstanding teachers have to develop teacher-driven curriculum. It is a partnership to develop. It's also very focused on the needs of Berkeley, it is a Berkeley-centered curriculum. Ethnic Studies does have a proud history in the Bay Area. In nineteen sixty-eight, students participated in the longest student strikes in the history of San Francisco State and UC Berkeley so that students could have access to an education that reflected their histories and experiences as people of color. Black, Latinx, Latinee, Asian-American, Native American student organizations fought in solidarity to achieve the first-ever ethnic studies departments in the country. That same year, we also, black students, families, and educators at Berkeley High advocated for and established an African-American studies department under the direction of Richard Nabbies. In nineteen ninety, a group of students at Berkeley High School advocated for a required ethnic studies class, which was shortly followed by a Latinx, Latinee studies, Asian-American studies classes. Currently, Berkeley High continues to have a thriving African-American studies department, a universal ninth-grade ethnic studies class, and several other elective ethnic studies classes. We ask that the district continue to honor our proud history of ethnic studies and to extend the contract of LES MCC into a multi-year contract, mostly because we've just begun the work. We've spent two years trying to make sure that we had a process in place. We have had a chance, they've presented to us curriculum models. The teachers are having an opportunity to, to have that, and we know, we need the data. It hasn't, we haven't had an opportunity to really see what's happening right now. Research shows that ethnic studies improves engagement, attendance, and academic achievement for all students. Students deserve to know the true histories of systemic oppression, oppression that is noted and rooted in our laws, in our education system, healthcare, and work environments. We need ethnic studies, the study of the root causes of racial oppression and systemic oppression, not simply the idea of multicultural inclusion of different perspectives, which is, tends to be more celebratory than deep. And the other part that I would add personally, as a, as I said, I'm a teacher educator, is that I have really spent the last thirty-five years working and looking at this, at how children are impacted by bias beginning at two and three years old. They also reflect bias in their behaviors at two and three years old. So in nothing in any of our comments, and certainly not my comments, would I ever wish that anybody, and no one should be treated unfairly or with bias or discrimination, but ethnic studies is not the cause of that. And I would hope that we want to prepare our students, as I said earlier, to be able to have these difficult conversations because it's the lack of ability to do that that has landed us in so much of the trouble that we have as a society.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any additional committee comments, Ms. Barrios? Was that the last committee? Thank you, and now we will move on to board member comments. Thank you again for all of you who came to speak to us. Before we start board member comments tonight, I'd like to remind our colleagues to review our governance team commitments. The full list of our governance team commitments can be found in our board meeting agendas. Let's be the best role models that we can for our students. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues. I'm going to start with Director Shonowski, she's ready online, and then we'll move to our in-person board comments. So our colleagues, great, Director Shonowski.
Hi, good evening. I actually have a prepared statement that I'd like to read in lieu of my board comments tonight. Before I do, I want to thank everyone who is there in the audience for showing up and participating in our, in our meeting tonight. I ran to be a school board director for a number of reasons. Most importantly, I ran because I really value the power of public education. Public education saved my life, and I've seen it save so many others. At its best, public education lifts all of us up and makes us smarter, fairer, and more connected. After serving now for a little over a year, I've learned so much, and I'm so grateful to everyone who has engaged in that learning, my board colleagues, administrators, teachers, staff, students, community members, and parents. It's through this communication with all of these groups that I've become more clear about the things that are most important to me while I do this work. I want to support initiatives so that our kids can read by third grade because after that, research tells us that our jobs become so much harder. I want to learn about how we can better support math instruction because knowing that only a small fraction of our black middle schoolers are proficient by seventh grade is just unacceptable. I want to support an ethnic studies program that enriches all of our lives by sharing the perspectives of historically marginalized communities. We need a place to learn the stories, histories, and books by and of those who are barely mentioned in our history, science, and literature courses. And we need robust policies and procedures that protect that space while also ensuring fidelity to the truth. I have been reluctant to engage over political issues in this space. Since October seventh, I've resisted making comments condemning Hamas, and I've resisted calls for a ceasefire. My hesitation in condemning Hamas in this space was unpopular because, I came to understand, Jewish families felt isolated and unseen. My hesitation to call for a ceasefire in this space continues to cause Arab and Palestinian families to feel similarly. My reluctance has been centered on a need to focus on our students and do the job that I was elected to do. Strictly speaking, I was elected to oversee the superintendent, manage the budget, and ensure that policies, procedures, and laws are adhered to. My personal opinion on political issues has always seemed like a distraction. I no longer feel that I can be silent about the conflict in the Middle East because it's now directly impacting our district in significant ways. The headlines this week are warning of an imminent famine in Gaza, while Israeli Prime Minister Netanyahu plans to send troops into Rafah. There is a humanitarian crisis in Palestine. Saying so is not anti-Semitic. It's anti-war, anti-capitalism, anti-industrial military complex, and anti-pain. In the wake of October seventh, my heart hurts for the ongoing pain associated with the attacks on innocent civilians and the taking of hostages in Israel. And my heart hurts for those impacted by the ongoing military action and man-made humanitarian crisis in Palestine. My heart hurts for our teachers and our staff who are under constant scrutiny and vilified for any perceived imperfection. And my heart hurts for our children, the children we are here to serve, who want to learn to read, write, and do math problems in a safe and supportive place, but often get lost among the very adult disagreements we have. A couple weeks ago, I, alongside the superintendent and other district staff, had the privilege of listening to an October seventh survivor, Ron Island, as he shared his experiences and perspectives. Mr. Island was thoughtful, kind, and loving. He kept his humor and his humanity even the wake, in the wake of such trauma and tragedy, and he calculated against using his experience to justify more division. He is an example for all of us. I trust we'll be able to navigate through this difficult time as we've been able to navigate through other difficult times. And as we figure out how to do that, I truly hope that we can center our humanity, our relationships, and our children. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Shinowski. Board, and I'm going to call on Vice President Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Wow, tough crowd. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening in regards to vote sixteen, gender-neutral bathroom access, the renaming of the track and field after Mr. Willie White, Green New Deal for schools and climate curriculum, liberated ethnic studies, increased compensation for our educators, transportation and the Bridge Program. Special thank you to Mildred for your comments tonight in support of the Berkeley Council of Classifieds employees, and Matt Meyer for your comments on behalf of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I'd like to take, I'm going to be very, very short tonight, which is, hasn't been me recently, but I'm going to be short tonight. And I'd like to take this time to show my support for the upcoming events that were already mentioned by the superintendent. And I look forward to seeing all of you at the Oratorical Competition tomorrow, as well as on Monday for the Reparations Task Force Survey Results Meeting and Presentation. I would also like to make you aware of a very special event that was not introduced tonight, but it is really important in our Berkeley community and one of my favorite Berkeley events celebrating the excellence of our amazing school districts, students, and educators. And this event is the Berkeley Public Schools Fund Block Party. So held on Saturday, August 27th, from eleven thirty, from eleven AM to three PM at Civic Center Park. There will be a free event that is focused on celebrating BUSD student joy and excellence, featuring student performances, artwork, activities, and demonstrations. All of the Berkeley Unified School District community is welcome, and so is the Berkeley community. So I hope that you all will come out and support the Berkeley Public Schools Fund Block Party. It is an incredible event, and it is also so much fun. April, did I say May? Wow, April. Don't come in August, we won't be there. Okay, April 27th, eleven AM to three PM at Civic Park. Let me say it one more time, April 27th, from eleven AM to three PM at Civic Center Park. The next important event that I would like to make you all, to invite you all to and make mention of is my office hours, which will be held next Saturday, March 30th, at nine thirty AM via Zoom. And the link will be provided on the Board of Education landing page. Again, that's March 30th at nine thirty AM via Zoom, and the link will be provided. And as promised, very short comments tonight, and I'll turn it back over to you, President Vasudev.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Board colleagues, any other comments tonight? Student Director Q.
Okay, I'm going to keep it short as well, but I wanted to wish everyone a happy Women's History Month. And this month, I've been working with Berkeley High Sexual Harassment Advisory Committee and Women's Student Union to create educational videos on our bulletin about women's history and plan some events to celebrate the end of Women's History Month, which is coming next week. Additionally, we have also been discussing Denim Day, which is a day at the end of April to raise awareness about sexual assault. And we plan to hold activities to educate our student body at the end of April. We are very excited to engage our student body with these events. I also just wanted to offer my support to the teachers and express my utmost appreciation to them. As a senior who will graduate soon, my teachers have played such a key role in shaping my high school experience, and they are one of the main reasons that I'm excited to go to school every day to learn. And they are the reason my peers and I feel like our wellbeing is supported at school. Lastly, this is just on a light note, Palm is this Saturday for Berkeley High and VTAC students, and I know the student body is very excited about that, and we will have lots of fun.
Thank you very much, Student Director. Who would like to go? Director Chang.
Hello, it was nice to see everybody here who have subsequently marched out. Lots of people here marched right out. I think spring is in the air. It is hard to believe that we are already pulling up on the end of the school year. It's actually, I just realized that we don't have much time left to the end of the school year. So there's lots of work to be done. I want to thank our teaching and labor, staff labor, partners for your service to our children and our community and to Berkeley values. A shout out to the cutting-edge critical pedagogy that you lead our students on every single day, preparing them for the complexity of modern times. I know it's hard work. Let's continue to model for the rest of the country, a community that does not shy from controversial topics, and which also equally embraces the reality of different viewpoints, and in so doing, provides safety for disagreement and difference. We are coming upon a period of some probable budget limitations. We can work together to continue to ensure that Berkeley has a world-class public education. Some public comments I want to shout out to appreciate, the BFT, of course. I'm hearing fair and sustainable health benefits, including dental coverage and medical coverage are important, of course, for retention and recruitment. BCC E, I'm hearing also recruitment and retention regarding bus driver labor shortages, concerns about potential layoffs in a time of potential budget restrictions. BCC E staff provide critical core services such as IAs, restorative justice, and PARAs, and these are all critical to our Berkeley cutting-edge education. Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee members, thank you so much for your work. The work you put in to ensure that Berkeley continues to be a place that we do not shy from controversial topics, and we teach our students and lead our community in critical pedagogy, but also in understanding the complexity of modern times. Gaia, the gender-neutral bathrooms, which is so important as well, that we continue to work on here in the district. The renaming of the track that we heard about. Thank you so much for giving a shout out to that incredible coach, Mr. Willie White. The Sunrise Movement, Green Deal for Schools, Climate Curriculum. And again, the Bridge Program, which has had a number of successful students. And I'm glad to see the students come to our meetings and discuss their amazing achievements and admissions to college. Congratulations to you. So our committees too, thank you so much for your hard work. Again, the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee, the Audit Committee, all the committees that do the important work of ensuring the programs and services of our district run smoothly. Just to keep this short, committee work, Policy Committee, Civilian Bond Oversight Committee, recent meetings with these committees, ongoing important work for the district. Also, you can always reach out to me for office hours by email. I continue to meet folks either in person or Zoom, depending on what's available. And again, thank you for your participation today, and have a great spring break. Everybody has well-deserved break time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chang and Director Babbitt.
Thank you. This evening, I want to first start off with a shout out to the Longfellow Literacy Family Night, which was last night. It was a wonderful event. And it would not have been possible without the collaboration of the Longfellow leadership and many of the teachers, caregivers, and students, as well as student volunteers. The diverse involvement of the TWI Programs, OFE, PTA, RTI, and our literacy specialists, as well as the Berkeley Public Library and Reading for Berkeley, the test to our unique community. For the first ever event, the turnout was close to one hundred and fifty participants, which shows how much literacy means to our community. I want to applaud them as they are already thinking about how next year will be even better. Secondly, I want to encourage families to look at the flyers on the back table. The City of Berkeley Youth Programs, which our superintendent mentioned, have available spots for our spring break. Please fill those up, as we know that our kids still need to be engaged, even though they're being refreshed during spring break. And lastly, one year ago, we lost Lilia Bartlow. And it was my honor to stand on the shoulders, and I still continue to stand on the shoulders of her father, Mr. Daryl Bartlow, who is certainly a strong tower in our community. It has also been my honor to meet and learn from, from her and to bask in the light of love that her mother shows, Mrs. Bartlow. They both continue to support our students and families even to this day. So tonight, in memory of Mrs. Lilia Bartlow, I created and compiled a video which highlights why Lilia Bartlow's last advocacy speech to this board was about College Bound. The video closes with a tribute to women, as we are also in Women's History Month. Thank you, Caitlin, for honoring that and for all the work that you all are doing at the school to honor Women's History Month. So please take a moment and enjoy this tribute to Ms. Lilia Bartlow, as well as to Women's History Month. Thank you.
In College Bound, of course I got the yellow drip. I'm in College Bound. Of course I'm going to the Self-Reliance Pledge and the Time Commitment Pledge.
I'm in College Bound. Of course I'm going to the Lilia Bartlow Atlanta College Tour.
I'm in College Bound. Of course my G pairs are four point oh.
I'm in College Bound. Of course I know my A through D requirements.
I'm in College Bound. Of course I'll learn new information every meeting.
I'm going to College Bound. Of course Dr. Willis gives us information as I seize for college.
Hi, I'm Dr. Darlene V. Willis, co-founder and executive director of Concerned Parents Alliance College Bound Academy Programs. Specifically today, I talk to you about College Bound Berkeley Academy Program. It is part of the Black Lives Matter Resolution, as well as the African American Success Framework. Our nonprofit has existed for twenty years, where one hundred percent of our scholars have graduated from high school and had the choice of attending college while their parents successfully learn to navigate the educational system. We invite you, sixth through twelfth grade scholars and your parents or responsible adults to come and join us once a month to help with your academic journey. We'd love to have you. Come check us out. Get a glimpse into College Bound Berkeley.
Hello, hello, my name is Laura Babbitt. I am president of the Berkeley Unified School District School Board, and it has been my pleasure to serve at a time when we were able to bring this awesome, amazing program to Berkeley Unified School District for our students. For many, many years, we have wanted a program that would make sure that our students, particularly our black students, would be able to have the opportunities that College Bound provides. College tours, connections to universities, admissions offices, really helping them get through their college application process, learning about financial aid, learning about mental health and wellness, learning about how to be an athlete scholar.
My name is Lenaya Kirkwood, and I'm a senior at Berkeley High. I'm a part of the College Bound program. College Bound has helped me by giving me job opportunities, like working at Rosa Parks with the Step Up Academy. They've also given me college tour opportunities, so I found the college that I want to go to, which is UC San Diego. They also give you scholarship opportunities, like the Chancellor's Associate Scholarship, which can give you a full ride to UC San Diego, which is something I'm applying for. They also gave me college application help, so any questions I had, or like reading over my essays, which I really appreciate.
Hi, my name is Anya Evans. I'm in the eleventh grade. And College Bound has really helped me just find other opportunities for college scholarships. It really engaged me in my college journey and what I want to do.
So College Bound does not exist in isolation. It is a part of the USD's African American Success Framework.
You're frozen. Shelley, you're on mute. Can't hear you. You're frozen. Shelley, you're frozen.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Yeah, I'll keep my comments pretty short. I'm looking forward to the report out tonight on our strategic planning process. Again, this is a best practice for school districts to have a robust strategic plan. So I'm excited for the presentation tonight, and also for an update on our Safe Roots to School program. All our students and education workers should be able to get to school safely and sustainably. And that's something that I'm committed to continue to working with our school district, with Alameda County Safe Roots to School Program, with our city partners. It's a program that I hope to really bring to fruition in BUSD. So looking forward to those two updates tonight. Also wanted to echo the sentiments from my colleagues, thanking our labor partners for being here and all of the diverse public commenters that were here tonight. We really appreciate you staying so late and coming to our board meeting. And tomorrow, I just want to thank our Associate Superintendent, who will be accompanying me to the Commemorative Period Event for Dolor de Suertas, Cesar Chavez, and Mary Itniong. The theme of the event will be focused on environmental justice and is sponsored by Berkeley City College, by the Hispanic Serving Institutions Grant, the UC Berkeley Chinex Latinx Student Development Center, UC Berkeley's Latinx in the Environment Program, the Mario Sivill Social Justice Program at UC Berkeley, and City of Berkeley, Latinos and Migos of Berkeley, and the Chavez Suerta Commemorative Committee. I also want to thank all the hard work that has gone into our Black Oratorical Fest and I'm excited for the event tomorrow. I had the pleasure of signing the certifications for our students, so I can't wait to see the video and hear how that goes. And best of luck to all our students. We're all winners. And with that, we are going to move forward with our consent calendar. Colleagues, can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. I'll second.
And Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll, since we have a colleague online? This I can. Director Mike Chang.
Yes.
Director Khadija Brown.
Yes.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Yes.
Assistant Director Kalen Lau.
Yes.
And Director Jennifer Shinowski.
Yes.
President Anna Vasudev. Yes. And Mr. Billit, don't leave you with it. For consent items twelve point four, twelve point five, and twelve point six, I want to share a heartfelt congratulations to our principal appointees. Mr. Billit, Principal of Willard Middle School, who is with us this evening. Please rise, Mr. Billit. I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Maria Correlo, Principal of Sylvia Mendez, and Ms. Madeline Rogan, Principal of our Early Education Center, who are joining us virtually. Congratulations to you all. I appreciate your leadership and everything that you do for our students. So excited just that you're staying with our district, and thank you so much for stepping up to the plate and shepherding our district and our students. So thank you all. And with that, I'll turn it over to our first presentation, Agenda Item thirteen point one. It's an update from our district's annual audit. And so I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. Will you be introducing this item?
Actually, our auditor is here from Crowe and Charles. We're going to present the audit update. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and present to you and discuss a little bit about the results of the audit. As the Audit Committee presented earlier in their report, we've been able to issue our audit report over the district's financial statements and state compliance and federal compliance for this current fiscal year, the most recent closed fiscal year, June thirty, twenty twenty-three. I'll just really quickly highlight two elements that are required to be communicated to the board as part of the audit communications. The first is responsibility. So the management of the district and yourselves as the governing board retain responsibility of the financial statements and the internal controls that are in place at the district to be able to produce accurate financial statements. to be able to produce accurate financial statements. In addition, because you have to comply with federal compliance requirements and state compliance requirements, you're also, the management and the board are responsible for controls over compliance to produce compliant areas that are applicable to the district, whether it be that, again, federal requirement or the state requirement. So those are the three overarching scopes that we conduct our audit over, and in this case, the 2023, the federal compliance, state compliance, and the financial statements themselves. So all those three components come together to be the audit report that you see presented before you. It was submitted, I will say that it was submitted to the State Controller's Office and to the California Department of Education and to the Alameda County Office of Education as required by government education code. So in this case, we had, as again, the Audit Committee representative mentioned, two findings that had to be communicated out this year as it related to the district's financial statements. In this case, these findings were specific to state compliance. State compliance is really kind of binary. It's either we have to report it. It's either compliant or it's not. There is kind of an element of materiality in that if the compliance deficiency or the non-compliance was not material, meaning it didn't have a fiscal impact that resulted in qualification of our opinion, then it has less impact to you all as a district, so you don't have a loss of funding, I guess is what I mean by that when I say not material. In this case, as he mentioned in his presentation, sort of stole my thunder a little bit. There was those two compliance requirements that we had to issue a finding over, again, because it was either compliant or not. One was the After School Education and Safety Program, and the other was the Instructional Materials Program. So for the ACES program, there were a matter of just days differences that were identified in the supporting documentation we received from the site for those after-school programs and what was reported to the state. In total, it was an impact of 11 attendance days of reporting. In the Instructional Materials finding, this is a little bit restrictive, right? Because the state says you have to present this as a public hearing by the end of the eighth week of the school year, and that's an eighth calendar week. In this case, it was presented on the ninth calendar week beyond the beginning of the school year for the 2023 school year. So it's either, again, compliant or not, whether there's a fiscal impact or not, is not applicable for this 2023 audit, and we have to report it if it was after that date. So we did. So all in all, relative to the findings that we've seen this year in other districts throughout the state, it's pretty minor, especially considering some of the more restrictive requirements that came along with the funding that we had to audit. ELOG program, for example, Transitional Kindergarten. There were a lot of new programs out there. There's actually more than 30 different programs that we audit for state compliance, and many districts that we encountered this year had issues throughout those new areas. So happy to say that it was relatively minor in that issues that we did encounter for the district this year. So I'm happy to go into any more level of granularity or detail on the audit report, but I will say that management did what they needed to do and we needed from them to be able to get our audit done, and we appreciate very much Mrs. Fallinsby and the rest of the business office efforts to get us what we needed. So I do have no other specific comments, but again, if you want me to expand on anything or have questions, I'm happy to address.
Thank you so much. This is Agendized as a presentation. We typically don't add any questions, but we can follow up with Associate Superintendent Fallinsby if there are any additional questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. But colleagues, I'm going to call for a break because the next item is a 60-minute item, and I want to make sure that we give an opportunity to our student director to go home if she needs to, and we'll take a five to 10-minute break.
Just one second. I do want to just really celebrate and thank you and your department, Associate Superintendent Fallinsby, for this report. As a controller of global operations, I do know how much work it is to pass an audit, so good job.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby. And thank you so much for the presentation tonight. And with that, Ms. Barrios, if you can add 10 minutes for a break. Thank you. We'll see you in 10 minutes.
Superintendent, will you be introducing agenda item fourteen point one?
Hello. Good evening, Board Directors. I am Unika For Martell, the proud superintendent of Berkeley Unified, and joining me is Jill Hogan-Dyke, our Associate Superintendent of Instruction. Just it's gonna take some time before we get our presentation up. But we're here this evening to engage you in our strategic planning process and the framework. We have a number of objectives for you this evening, and it is going to be quite different than the traditional presentation or discussion item, in that it is not simply a presentation, but really is a discussion item and opportunity for us to engage you all as Board Directors in both understanding the strategic planning process, as well as getting your feedback and input, and highlighting for you some of our work to date. So our objectives for this evening are to reintroduce strategic planning to Berkeley Unified School District. And I say reintroduce because I do know a couple of years back, the district did begin to engage in a strategic planning process. We're going to share some things in hopes that you will walk away understanding key components of the strategic plan, understand our strategic planning process, and then in bode with the two asterisks is we're gonna take the majority of the time to engage you in the themes that we have found and heard to date, and give you a chance to respond to those, as well as to share some thoughts and feedback of your own. And then finally, we're gonna highlight next steps to the strategic planning process. We start every convening, as you know, by grounding us all in our shared mission, which is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And we know that even though Berkeley has made much progress towards that end, we see data that tells us that story. We also know there's a persistent and consistent gap that is rather predictable, and there are a number of student groups that we continue to underserve and who have yet to realize all of their brilliance. And so it is our collective interest and our collective mission to make sure that when we talk about enabling and inspiring, when we talk about academic excellence and making positive contributions, that is truly for all of our students and all of their diversity. What is a common quote that you've likely seen before, because I showed it a lot last year, is that in order for us to move towards any mission as a large organization, Michael Fulen says, "We need consistency of purpose, policy, and practice." He says that structure and strategy are not enough, and that the solution requires the individual and collective ability to build shared meaning, capacity, and commitment to action. When large numbers of people have a deeply understood sense of what needs to be done, when they see their part in achieving that purpose, coherence emerges and powerful things happen. We truly believe that our mission here in Berkeley Unified School District and our four E's are powerful, and that if we are aligned in our purpose, practice, and policy, if we work together to have a clear structure and strategy, and if we move collectively with a shared action in mind and with intentionality, we believe that we can achieve this mission statement for all of our students across all of their diversities. With that in mind, last year, when I began as a superintendent, I shared with you all a focus on organizational clarity, and called out that what organizational clarity would involve is making sure that every member of our school district, every member of our Berkeley community would know who we are and why we exist, would know what we plan to achieve and by when, would know who is responsible for what, but also know how we measure our progress and hold ourselves accountable, and would finally know how we use our resources to do all of those things. You have not heard me say that as often, but I have made it clear to my team and have said publicly in other settings that organizational clarity is still our focus here in BUSD, and that we believe that organizational clarity is the means to the end of enabling, inspiring, and making sure academic excellence and positive contributions to the world really can happen for every graduate that we serve here in Berkeley Unified. Along, I'm clicking two different things, sorry. Along with that, I identified four key areas of organizational clarity. If you recall, hopefully you do, identity, infrastructure, identify focal populations, and implementation. Calling those out to say that none of those things have gone away, we continue to move towards organizational clarity, and we continue to believe, like the Michael Fulen quote says, that if we are strategic, if we are aligned, and if we understand our collective work, then we can make powerful things happen. With that in mind, we are excited to move our districts towards the development of a BUSD strategic plan. Overall, the strategic plan is really an essential document that helps a district board organization outline their priorities, make sure that they move towards those priorities proactively, that they are purposeful and effective in achieving their shared goals, and that there's high levels of impact and input, sorry, there's high levels of input. There's continuous improvement in multiple ways to measure that progress, ultimately towards the goal of impact. What is a strategic plan, you might ask? A strat plan essentially is just a roadmap, and I say just to not imply that it is something light or something to be taken for granted. It's actually something that's really critical. It gives us direction as a district and an organization, and it sets our priorities. It's essential that a strat plan is detailed, that it guides decision-making and implementation, but it's also important that it's concise, that it's accessible, and that it's actionable to ensure that it effectively communicates our vision, our goals, and our strategies to all of our educational partners and stakeholders. I want to talk to you now a little bit about the key components of strategic plans. So there is a process that most organizations go through to create a strategic plan, and that process was shared with you earlier when we talked about the LCAP planning, but I'm gonna quickly remind you of it now. It's important before starting a strategic plan that you do a needs assessment. Some call this a SWOT analysis. You look at your strengths, your weaknesses, your opportunities, and your threats. You review data to figure out where areas of strength, if you will, or progress, and also where are gaps or areas of need and focus. This process also requires a lot of strategic stakeholder engagement, and this is, the engagement is a term that's used often, but I would say that for us in BUSD that we consider engagement to need to be not just engagement, whereas we're giving information, but thoughtful and authentic engagement towards the end of co-creation. And so although this is one bullet on the process, it's one that is continuous throughout every component of the planning process. In the planning process, you also need to outline or at least call out a mission and vision. Lucky for us, we already have a mission, which you all know by heart. We will be developing a vision statement as well. We set goals and objectives, we identify strategies and actions, and we establish metrics and accountability measures, and then we identify the resources that we're gonna allocate towards that end. I'm getting distracted. And I went out of order. Thank you. So I want to talk to you now about some of the elements in a strategic plan, and these are just kind of like the sections, if you will, of a strat plan. Strat plans start with oftentimes a description of the district itself, the students who make up the district, demographics, et cetera, a little bit of historical context. And then it moves into the mission and vision statement. It goes into goals and objectives. There's a section again for strategies and actions. There's another section for performance indicators and metrics. And again, resource allocation is also in there. And then a timeline and implementation schedule is an important section of any strat plan. What I'm excited about for BUSD strat plan is that we're also going to have a profile of a BUSD graduate. That is not necessarily typical or required in strat plans, but I have found it very helpful if more and more districts are creating these, so that we can have a shared understanding and idea of who we want our students to be when they leave our school district. And from there, we can backwards map what we want them to have in terms of skills, disposition, and knowledge, and then how to make sure we prepare them for that. I also want to call out and highlight not just the typical sections, but what has gotten me excited as I've looked over various other district strategic plans is an idea of how we can actually organize our strat plan, and definitely sharing this to you as an initial kind of draft or idea, nothing is finalized, but want to think about organizing our strat plan by pillars or big buckets. Under each of those pillars, listing priorities for those pillars, why that pillar or priority matters, outlining a few strategies, measures of success, and resources. And I want to share with you a visual, where's all the visuals? Sorry, one second. Oh, it's not on my screen. Sorry, I want to share with you a visual example from Los Angeles Unified School District. So if you look on the left-hand side of this particular slide, you'll see an example of a pillar. So LAUSD just happens to be the one that I'm using an example from this afternoon, but there are this evening, but there are several other districts that follow a similar process. And again, the key is we're trying to find something that is concise, that is clear, and that is accessible to our stakeholders and partners. So an example of a pillar and a priority. On the left-hand side, you will see that academic excellence is a pillar in Los Angeles Unified School District, and in under academic excellence, they've called out four priorities: high-quality instruction, enriching experiences, eliminating opportunity gaps, and college and career readiness. Again, these are not necessarily our pillars or our priorities, but I know folks sometimes have a hard time conceptualizing what a strat plan might look like, and so I wanted to show some examples. Again, LA Unified, their pillars and their priorities. If you look to the right, you'll actually see that LAUSD has five pillars, or five big buckets, if you will: academic excellence, joy and wellness, engagement and collaboration, operational effectiveness, and investing in staff. And then under each of them, they've called their priorities that they're gonna focus on over the next several years. As we move to the next slide, continuing with this same model, you'll see that LA Unified has not only called out their pillars and their priorities on this page, but also they've identified why that particular priority matters. We've gotten a lot of feedback that we'll be sharing with you shortly, and we do think it's important not just to tell the what, but also to tell the story of the why. Why did we choose this priority area for BUSD for the next three to five years, for example? Under that priority, you will see that there are a number of strategies, but it is not a crazy long list of strategies. There are, in this example, eight strategies that are actionable and that the district can monitor and that we can engage our stakeholders along with to make sure that we're being held accountable for those things and that they're actually doable. Finally, I want to show you an example of measures of success, again, from LAUSD, just to be consistent. Underneath that very same bucket or that very same pillar and that priority of college and career readiness, you see the district has a goal of by 2026, and they outline six to seven measures or metrics that they will use to monitor their progress on that particular priority area. Again, this is not necessarily how we have to do it, but I've had a lot of folks ask me, well, what does it look like? Because they couldn't conceptualize. So I just wanted to show you an example of how a district, how many districts actually use this one document to pull together big ideas or big buckets, named priorities, named strategies towards achieving those priorities, and also outline metrics and resources. The other thing I want to highlight in this section is that there are many common pitfalls to creating drafting, not just strategic plans, but a lot of district plans, but strategic plans in particular. Those include lack of stakeholder involvement, unclear vision and goals, overly ambitious goals, inadequate data analysis, lack of alignment with resources, sorry, failure to prioritize initiatives, overloading actions, insufficient monitoring and evaluation, lack of flexibility and adaptability, and lack of board and system alignment. These are important for us to think about as we continue to move into our strategic planning process so that we're able to avoid and mitigate them along the way and make sure that we do not fall into these pitfalls. The last one said, "Lack of board and system alignment." And again, going back to the idea of organizational clarity and coherence, one of the things that we know is gonna be important for our strategic plan is that we are really clear on what role every single level of the organization plays in operationalizing the strategies in action and moving us towards our goal. So in our strategic plan, there will not only be those components that I just talked about in the last couple of slides, but there will be a clear outline for what is the Board of Education's role? What is the role of central office? What is the site administration role? And then, of course, what's the role of those who are indirectly serving our students day-to-day in our classroom, as well as our other staff who interact with our babies every day? So the next section is where you begin to do more of the talking and we do more of the listening. Again, one of our goals, one of our primary goals here this evening is to really engage you in the themes and what we've learned to date from our engagement and to engage you to get some of your feedback and your ideas as we continue to draft our strategic plan. I'm gonna quickly go over the planning process, and then Jill, sorry, Assistant Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke and I are going to share some of the themes from our board and from our district engagement that we've had over the last several months, and even those that were had over the last couple of years. I'm not sure what's going on with this clicker. So as I said to you, the very first step of any strategic planning process is to do a needs assessment, or sometimes called a SWOT analysis or data review. Our team has been looking at data for the last, we've been here for a year and a half, for the last year and a half. As soon as we came, we started looking at data and started to build systems that we could have more data to look at. We looked at both local data, we looked at state data, we looked at longitudinal data, so not just what our third graders are doing right now, but what they were doing when they were in second grade, and if possible, what they were doing in the year prior to that. So lots of different data sets we've been looking at. And we've also been engaging our stakeholders in all those different data sets to, again, figure out what are we doing, you know, well, and where do we need to continue to focus?
I just wanted, we do have some of those data sets that are also up on the walls for folks who are in the audience. We did put some of the examples that we've been using at the engagement sessions here.
Assessment data is not the only type of data we looked at, and we have looked at, and will continue to look at attendance data, social, emotional, and behavior data, and a number of other data sets that we have available to us. And we also spent our time to look at the various plans and initiatives that already exist. And we also spent our time to look at the various plans and initiatives that already exist in BUSD. To find out what we can learn um, from those as well. That's okay. So that's just another slide to remind you that we have a lot of plans in BUSD with a lot of actions. Um, what we heard loud and clear from our community was that there had been a lot of stakeholder engagement over the last several years. Going back even before 2021, 22. But what you see here is documenting 21, 22 and beyond. There were a number of efforts to engage stakeholders around different plans or different priorities. What they had in common was the questions of what is the district doing well? What do we need to improve on? What do you want more of? Um, and what do you no longer want? Um, and we had heard loud and clear that the community was saying, please stop asking us. And it was not that the community did not like to be heard and did not want to be heard. But rather they felt like they were saying the same thing over and over. That what they thought we needed to do. What we needed to get rid of or the ways we, what we were doing well, had not really changed from year to year. What they wanted to see was what we were going to do to address the things that they said. They wanted to know that we were listening because we were taking action on what was shared. And so um, again, another important, a really important part of strategic planning is the engagement process. We didn't want to completely skip it. But we also want to be respectful to the feedback that we have been getting from the community. And so what we did is we compiled the data from all these various engagements. That's again, going back to 21, 22. But also including my listening and learning data. Um, and a number of other data sets that were asking our stakeholders those same questions of what are we doing well? What do you want more of? And we synthesized them. We then took those data sets to the community and we asked them, do we get it right? Is that what you said? Is that what we heard? Um, and we wanted them to respond to that. We wanted them to build on those things. And we wanted them to add if necessary. The feedback was that folks really appreciated that they weren't starting from scratch. But also that they had a chance to expand on their ideas, but also hear the ideas from other stakeholder groups that they may not have heard from before. Um, so what we did is we actually engaged our stakeholders. Some of you all came. Director Babett might be in one of these pictures. Um, we had over five engagement, we had five, sorry, engagement sessions. Uh, two were virtual and three were in person. They were open to any BUSD community member. And so at these sessions, we had students, we had staff and teachers. Uh, we had community members who were just interested in what's going on in Berkeley. Um, we had board directors and more. Um, at our sessions, we had over eighty-seven folks who came out. And of those eighty-seven people, we had three hundred and ninety-five individual sets of feedback or post-its. Um, in layman terms. Uh, and we, we took all those posters again and we looked for themes and trends. And we found seven big areas that I'm going to share with you momentarily and give you a chance to respond to. The other thing that we did. In service of getting that feedback was we sent out the LCAP survey again this year. You all are familiar with the LCAP survey. I'm going to let um, Associate Superintendent Hogan like tell a little bit of. About what was different about this year's uh, survey, if anything. But we wanted to call out that we were really wanting to make sure that as we use information to draft this plan. The community really felt heard and not just a small group of folks from our community. So in addition to that long list that was on the previous slide, in addition to those five engagement sessions with eighty-seven people. We had one thousand two hundred and sixty people respond to the survey. A significant increase from last year where we had four hundred and eighty-four. And if you look on that right column in yellow, you'll see that every single um, respondent group or demographic, if you will. Improved with significant improvement in our student feedback. Um, we're proud of that and excited. And with a district of um, about nine thousand students, we still wanted to hear and we want more. However, we think that we're um, going to be able to say that this is really representative of our stakeholders at this point. And of course, we're always open to continue to listen and get feedback as we go through the process. With that, I want to share with you the seven feedback themes that were consistent. Um, both in all those previous engagements between twenty twenty-one and now. Um, as well as the five that I mentioned and the survey themselves. The seven themes are lift up and support equity and inclusion. Align and evaluate resource educa- allocation. Improve academic outcomes, provide professional support. Plan, implement and evaluate programs consistently. Improve school climate and engage and collaborate with parents, families and the community. Some folks said it differently. But at the end of the day, when we were looking at what everyone was saying, they all fell in one of these categories. At the end of the day, when we took these seven themes, I think they're around the room to our engagement sessions. No one said, no, that's wrong. That's not what we said. They just provided us extra detailed information to understand what that particular theme meant to them and to their babies. This evening, what we would like you to do, I remember a couple of sessions ago, I think we're, when we're making the quick update on the LCAP and the strat plan. Uh, Director Babett said, well, when will we get to engage in strat planning? We originally planned to do this with you all as a retreat or a board session. And that had happened, but this is a critical part of your business. So we thought, why not do it during one of your business meetings? So what we would like to do with you this evening is to actually, like I said, engage you in the feedback. We're going to first start by showing you information from the themes. Uh, snippets, if you will, from the community feedback. And we're going to ask you for each of these sections to think about what, if anything, surprised you? What resonates with you? What if any questions you have and what excites you? I want to be clear, this is the community's feedback. So this is not about you changing it or anything, but this is a chance for you to kind of do a, what's this in class? Like, yep, I'm making a connection. I agree. Um, for you to build on some of those ideas. And it's a good way for us to get your information and your feedback to take back to inform the plan. And so again, we're going to go through each of the seven themes. So that's a sixteen-minute presentation. You don't all have to speak or respond. But if you, if you feel so led, we do want to hear from you. Any questions right now before we go to the? Okay, so we get to ask the questions now. So the first theme again was lift up and support equity and inclusion. And when we looked at the various post-it notes and the feedback from our um, uh, community. Um, some of the themes that came underneath that theme or some of the, you know, descriptors were inclusive and inclusion and support for diverse identities. Equity and accountability. Educational support and representation, cultural awareness and engagement. And more arts and physical education or diverse forms of expression. I'm going to stop there. To the right-hand side, you'll see some additional bullets. And again, want to remind you of those prompts. What surprised you, if anything, what resonates? What questions do you have? And what excites you about that first theme from our community members?
Jump in colleagues, we're being asked the question if you have. Are, are you going to call in a superintendent?
No. Go Director Babett. Um, there wasn't much that um, really surprised me about uh, the seven themes because. You know, I've been here and I've been a part of the people saying, stop asking us, let's do it. Let's just get it done. But what I do want to um, highlight is aligning and evaluating resource allocations. As well as plan, implement and evaluate programs consistently. Um, because I think those two items really speak to organizational clarity. And it really speaks to doing what we need to do and making sure that we do those things well. And fundamentally, it speaks to accountability, um, which is one of the. Reasons we have so many layers of, of plans currently. Because we haven't actually had uh, real true accountability measures in place. And a true um, focus on clarity, expectations and outcomes by roles and departments.
Directors?
Thank you, Director Rabbit. That was helpful because that was an extension. I don't know that we heard many folks that said focus on that by roles and department. So that is exactly what we're looking for. Thank you.
I think you're also asking for opportunity to kind of like highlight things that we hear. And so I just want to share that I agree uh, with uh, Director Babett. Um, and that is definitely a focal area for us and aligns to organizational clarity. And so I agree with um, what was shared. I'm not surprised, I'm also not surprised by anything on this list, but I do want to um. Highlight and uplift the local equity plans um, that are being presented or that is being listed rather um, tonight. And um, want to of course, you know, provide my support for that. I wanted to make, to learn more, I guess, about advocating for more arts and PE. Um, knowing uh, that we do pretty much currently offer a pretty robust um, arts program. Um, as well as um, meeting definitely the state needs for uh, physical, as the state. Uh, allowed it minutes for physical education. So I guess I want to just learn more about what that was birthed out of and the focus and how we plan to move around that.
Thank you. And to clarify for that point, and again, you, it's going to be a, it's not a regular presentation, so I'm going to go ahead and respond to uh, Vice President Brown. Um, the, the bullets to the right and even the kind of sub-themes underneath. Some of them are like fifty people said it, right? And then some of them might be three people said it, but we still wanted to represent it. Um, and so actually, as yours, as you made that comment, I was thinking for us to go back and kind of get a sense of, of scale. Um, and number for each of these, and they're all very important. But I would say that the, the art and PD, the art and PE came up a couple of times, but not as much some of the other ones. But the expression, the diverse forms of expression was a, was a big one. And that's actually one that we can go back and get clarification of. Particularly as we think about who we want our graduates to be. It might be that these folks have some very specific ideas of different types of art. For example, or even thinking about classroom assignments, how the students can demonstrate understanding. So thank you. I'm asking you all to focus right now, just on lift up and support equity and inclusion in your comments, but I'm writing it all down.
Got it. Yeah, I just wanted to um, echo some of the, the same reactions that Vice President Brown had just around. Um, so the appreciation for. The equity plans for improved outcomes, particularly for Black and Latinx students. But I also appreciate this call out, the kind of proactive call out to being able to support our, our neurodiverse students as well. And uh, gender expressive youth. And so I think this idea, you know, I like what OUSD did um, with their equity work is that they have very like. They have different kind of um, equity plans for all the different uh, affinity groups in their district. Really encourage us to, as we think of local, local equity plans, to also think of neurodiversity, uh, gender expression. Um, you know, just some of the other groups that were included there. Also really like in the themes, just the call for authentic community engagement with our families. I think that's also really important. And so as we think of, you know, what we mean by equity plans and who we're including there. How we're creating systems within the district to touch base with those families of all those um, different affinity groups, I think would be important. And also agree with what um, Director Babett said around. Just evaluation and what that looks like, right? Um, also wanted to just appreciate the call out to improve academic outcomes. I think parents want to know and, and I know that we report out like at board meetings, how we're doing on academic outcomes. But maybe for us as a district, like how do we continue to improve? In how we communicate with families when we're, you know, doing really well? And also our, our growth areas are in places outside of the boardroom because that's not always the best way to do it for authentic engagement. Director Chang and then we'll circulate to Director Babett.
Thanks so much. Um, yeah, I appreciate this um, uh, helpful. And timely uh, review of the strategic plan for the district. Um, you know, wanted to uh, provide some support and um, observations on. Uh, providing positive climate. Um, that's a really important um, improved school climate, which, which is obviously provide positive climate. Um, that's. To me, that's a, a real central pillar of these seven and it's um, all these other different themes together. Uh, in a broad strategic plan. And I, I've observed the um, engagement between Yasmina Vitessek. Of the um, district's compliance office. I think that's a really important role. And um, I, I'd like to continue to see the engagement between that kind of compliance. Or with the um, curriculum role and the um, the role that Matt Espinoza plays in the, as the director of equity. Um, all those pieces, you know, come together as, as um, uh, you all have been continuing to do. And at a time with um, questions about um, curriculum and controversial issues. Um, knitting those together, I think are really important to uh, ensuring that programs and services continue to run smoothly in a way that's um. Equitable and accessible to all students. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Babett and then Vice President Brown.
Thank you. I just wanted to um, highlight our equity rubric that we have in BUSD. Um, if we were to really use and implement that equity rubric. We would tick all of these boxes with some real outcomes. Um, thanks for the support out there, but. Yes, and uh, making sure that with the rubric that we're not only using it, but that we're also really doing the equity walkthroughs. That are uh, required to make this real. Um, because the worst thing we could do is go back to beautiful words on paper at the end of this. So if we don't get real specific with these actions and expectations. Um, we will upset through another beautiful presentation of words. So thank you. Um, you stole the words right out of my mouth in terms of the, I'm glad you went first. Well, no, I'm actually not glad you went first. I wanted to say that, but I'll say it differently. Um, when we talk about the equity and accountability piece. Um, I, I love the equity walkthroughs. I love the rubrics that uh, were really. And, and the purpose of why the rubrics were brought about. Um, but what does, what were the conversations about the accountability piece? So something must know about the equity rubric and the walkthroughs. Uh, but I'm sure that that may not have been the conversation in the room when you were having this discussion. And so in terms of accountability, what was the conversation? What wa- what was the feedback from the community? Um, especially from our, from our families um, who are calling for equity. What is the accountability piece that goes alongside of that?
For a lot of the families, when they talked about accountability, they first wanted to know what different programs and services we had. And what we expected those programs and services to do. So a lot of them had their own, you know, um. Uh, perceptions of what the program should be doing, let's say, and it wasn't, right? Um, but they had different ideas of, so really it started with like, what is this supposed to be doing? What's, what am I supposed to expect? Um, and then is, is this program providing or is this, is this software or whatever it is? Is it doing what it's supposed to be doing? So accountability for a lot of families was clarity in the, the what and the why and the how. Um, and then some clear impact measures is what a lot of families were asking for. So that we can measure it along the way. Most families just wanted to know, did it work or did it not work? But a lot of other families were asking for that ongoing kind of just, what's that called dipstick? To see if we were actually doing what we said we were going to do with those particular programs. So that's what accountability looks like for a lot of families. And then for some families, um, and jump in, do anyway you need, but like accountability was, was more about um. Kind of reporting out and sharing of progress. So some of them, you know, some things do have measures and we're clear on those measures. But our community didn't know if those things were actually moving towards um, the measures that we wanted it to move towards. So transparency and communication and kind of sharing was a part of the accountability. But probably I would say more so was the, what is it supposed to do? What should I expect and what's the measure?
Yes, and I think some of those internal measures, so we're building out those, the infrastructure for some of the, what we would call impact measures relative to formative. Um, or summative assessments. But there's this underlying question of like, did we do what we said we were going to do? Right? That sort of basic, so um, did we did this program? Did we do what we said we were going to do? To what extent did that happen? And that's, that's definitely an area that we have been able to share that we are striving toward. We're not there yet. We were sort of starting from building foundational systems for some of this work. Um, and then also where, where do they have opportunities to engage in these conversations? Right? So um, that will be work with the school sites in particular. Either at school site council meetings or ELAC meetings, um, those types of things. How do we um, build the muscle and the routine around looking at the site-based data?
And then, um, thank you. And then in knowing that um. Equity and um, there are the focus on equity is about more than just like cultural awareness. And about um, creating welcoming school environments. But it's also e- especially in terms of education, it's about giving students what they need to be successful. So I know that you all get to the point, get somewhere where you talk about um, instruction and curriculum and academic outcomes. But I'm wondering, were there conversations in this section that talked about um, academic interventions? Um, with a focus on equity, were there conversations um, about uh, needs-based assessments and learning and instruction? Um, were there more conversations about tier one, tier two, tier three? Were there more conversations about tier one, tier two, tier three support, what that looks like in using the vehicle of equity?
If you don't mind, I'm going to skip to the fourth section. I don't know what's over this clicker. Does that say improve? I can't see.
No, that says plan, implement and evaluate. Oh yeah, at the top. Which one?
So one of the categories was improve academic outcomes. And that is where those conversations happened. So we know that equity, right, is necessary and responsiveness is necessary to get to the academic outcomes. But those conversations that you were just speaking of, Vice President Brown, happened more under this theme. And what folks were really asking for was a lot of what you just talked about. Of course, a lot of our families didn't use that language of tier one, tier two. They focused a lot on intervention. So there was a lot of ask for targeted intervention and differentiation outside of the regular classroom space, which is why it's also helpful to have different ed partners weigh in on this because you all would know, or you would know as an educator to say, hey, we really have to focus on tier one as well. But a lot of the families identified, again, looking at those tier two and those intervention strategies as something that was really important. There was also an ask for us to be able to track progress. And they saw that as an equity lever. So we're not just waiting to the very end to figure out if a student was successful or not in a particular area, but we actually had a system to track it and then respond. In terms of equity, they also talked about early identification, but there was, there was, and you can chime in again. There was not a lot of kind of putting together this idea of academic outcomes. And equity, they kind of stayed as separate conversations, even though when you were, when we were listening to the families and quite honestly, the educators speak, you can tell they were, they had an idea of how we get there. And how we get there was by seeing each student as an individual and getting to know that student, what they needed, and then respond to that, which by definition is equity, though they didn't always call it that.
Yep. I think that they were, what they were identifying is a recognition that some students needed extra, although again, they might not necessarily be using that language. And then from the perspective of the parents, like how do they know? How do they know how these decisions are being made and what interventions their students are being assigned to, if any? And so we're, you know, how, how can we be more transparent about that process? And we're learning a lot about existing processes and where we've got some gaps. So that's definitely an area that we can continue to work on.
Can I ask a quick question just on this topic? I know that like some districts, as part of their strategic planning process, develop like, you know, for like metrics for improve, for illustrating how they're improving academic outcomes through like a graduate student profile, right? And that's, and it lives everywhere. Everybody knows about it. When you graduate from the district, these are like, like the skills that you're supposed to have or like, what's the vision? And I think with our previous superintendent, I know that was when we had talked at a high level about a strategic plan, that was a desired outcome at that time from a couple of parent groups. Did that ever come up or is that something that you see us, you know, kind of developing out of the strategic planning process?
So one of the key components that I get excited about that is going to be a part of our strategic plan is the profile of a BUSD graduate. And so in, so and to answer your question of did it come up, there was not no convenings that I recall where someone said, we need to know what our graduates are going to walk away with in terms of skill sets, a knowledge. That could have been though, because I led with that, because that is a part of the pro, that's a part of the strategic plan that I am super excited about, and I think is really necessary. Quite honestly, I talked about a profile of a BUSD graduate and a profile of a BUSD educator. And so I think because I led with it, folks didn't need to, to ask for it. But every space where we talked about it, our constituents were very excited about the idea and excited about being able to weigh in on what the skill sets, dispositions and knowledge are that our babies will leave our district with.
I will say, just in terms of staff being a stakeholder group, that has probably come up more as we've been looking at the engagement synthesis that we've been reviewing and a recognition that the graduate profile could really help us anchor what some of our goals are, right? It makes it more alive if we know what is it that we are aspiring for all of our graduates to have as they achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions? And that many of those skills, capacities and dispositions are, could be aligned to some of the goals and strategies that we're looking at.
So since we're on this side of improving academic outcomes, I see that some folks are already looking at it. If you could just glance at it again and look at the various bullets and examples of improving academic outcomes. And again, think about those questions. Is anything that surprises you, that resonates with you or questions that you have or something that excites you? Because that lets us know that that's something we need to really think about as we identify our own pillars and priorities.
Yeah, Vice President Brown.
I think something that stands out to me is definitely around implementing evidence-based instructional strategies. And not just doing that, but also having a teaching and learning cycle that is focused in continuous improvement for our students. I think that that is honestly one of the best ways to go. Especially when it comes to knowing that learning is a process, it's a cycle. And knowing that there, that our teachers are going to be equipped with practices that help them really work that cycle for students. I did want to ask, and maybe I'm missing it here from my list and maybe it's somewhere else, but I wanted to ask about how curriculum showed up in this conversation. And curriculum adoption. Because we can't improve academic outcomes without rethinking curriculum, especially knowing that there is about to be a math framework adoption coming from the state of California and some new curriculum recommendations that are going to come with that. And so how did this, that come up in this conversation or did it?
Conversations. And as I'm going through, when you said it, I kind of smiled and Jill was like, huh, I mean, yeah.
Well, I think that it did come up, although, you know, when we pulled some of these quotes, so that component that you just pulled out about evidence-based instructional strategies, there were post-it notes, again, not about tier one specifically. But how do we make sure that we are selecting our, selecting curriculum that's evidence-based or research-based? And then this other piece around offering training and resources to educators to differentiate instruction was about, some of those comments were about intervention materials specifically.
So intervention materials, but not really curriculum adoption, and especially knowing the presentation that we just received from the curriculum instruction department. It's interesting that there, there weren't any conversations about curriculum. I know that we are not adding to this list and we're just sharing our, our responses. But that is definitely my response is surprise that curriculum didn't, didn't come up. And I think that, I'm not sure how to give direction without adding to it, but I think that that is a place of focus. So.
And I think, I mean, I think the way that you're engaging in it is completely appropriate. So we gave those open-ended prompts for a reason. And what we're here is for is to hear what you might add or how you might enhance this list. And so that's good feedback. Because I think that, I think that even though a lot of our, the members of the engagement sessions didn't say curriculum, like curriculum adoption or curriculum, there's a, there's a lot of little things that they did say that made it clear that, you know, like you said, evidence-based or these materials, but yeah, it didn't get all the way there. So you explicitly saying it, I think is important.
Thank you. I appreciate that because we can give all teachers, all the best teaching strategies and practices in the world. But if our curriculum is not standards-based, I mean, not saying that it isn't because it is. But if our curriculum could use support around ensuring that it's standards-based aligned, ensuring that it meets the needs of our students and from an equity focus, ensuring that it's culturally relevant and responsive to the learning needs of our students. That would be one of the most important and best ways to pivot. So thanks for letting me chime in.
I will say the curriculum term came up more in the online survey, but we're still synthesizing that information. So.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry. Are you going to move through the other slides? Because there's a section on align and evaluate resource allocation that I think maybe in that feedback, people were trying to get towards some of the curriculum like areas that Director Albic had talked about last time.
Let's go ahead and go there.
And specifically, I was thinking, you know, foster collaboration between schools and community organizations. Like I remember last time that Director Albic presented, he talked about the, the need, you know, when we see data, right? In some schools, sometimes we see like math at X schools, but you know, the students are doing really well. And that sometimes there's variation among sites and trying to bring more cohesion in how we're in, in teaching. And so we talked about that, I think it was for English Language Arts and also for math as a goal. So I'm wondering if that's where it's coming up or I know that we also talked a lot about interventions and how to better support with interventions like tutoring and academic supports. So I'm wondering if as part of like aligning and evaluate, evaluating resource allocation, if maybe some of that curriculum feedback was in that section? Nope.
No, I would say like, I think kind of what I was saying to Vice President Brown, there was a lot of talk about intervention and, you know, support that was like outside of the classroom. And then in terms of in the classroom, it was more about the, the instructional moves, if you will, the pedagogical approach. There was very few that was about the curriculum itself. I don't think that that means that folks don't, wouldn't or don't see that as something that we need to do. I think it just didn't come up in the conversation. And so what this gives the opportunity to do is to record that because our next, one of our next steps is to play this stuff back to the community one more time, because we need to keep narrowing and narrowing and narrowing. So I'm sure it's something that will resonate with a lot of our educational partners, but it just did not come up in, in a very clear way in any of the 300,000 post-its that we reviewed.
And Vice President Brown.
Yes, are we doing the line and evaluate resource allocation?
Yes, please.
Okay. Did you want to introduce it or can I just jump in? You know what? Okay, I'll just jump in. I wanted to ask about staffing. It's listed here under staffing and professional development, underlining and evaluate, evaluating the resource allocations. What was the thought around staffing in terms of evaluating our resource allocations?
Staffing and professional development? So my recollection for this one is that it was really about making sure we, so people are a resource. So making sure that we had the appropriate staff to do the things that we say we want to do. Be the classroom teachers, but also be an interventionist and coaches, et cetera. And then a piece of kind of supporting and sustaining the staff was the PD. And so a lot of folks grouped those together. And both said, we need to make sure we allocate resources to have the adequate staffing that we need. But maybe even just as important that we had systems and structures to develop and support those staffs to do the jobs that we're asking them to do. So that is oftentimes how it came under that resource allocation piece. We described resources as money and time and people as well.
Okay. I think the reason I'm asking about the staffing portion is because I know that cabinet staff went through a series of preparing their
Their, their big bucket projects and priority vision, their mission.
It's called, no, yes, and their organizational charts. Thank you, their org charts. So I know that there's, there's been a lot of work done there already to prepare those org charts in terms of staffing. And so I was wondering if that was shared out, if folks knew about that effort before it was identified as a major bullet point, underlining and evaluating resource allocations.
No. I'm just going to let you all pick. Is there another, so there are seven of these. Is there another one that stand out to you? So we've done align and evaluate resources. We've done lift and support equity. There's another one that I see for president, I see vice, I see Director Babbitt. Engage and collaborate with partners, families and the community is another one. I thought she was going to unmute for that one.
No, I mean, I think that all of this resonates and all of this looks like something that's already in one of our, one, two, three, four, five of our current plans. So I'm just trying to really I know that I've approved these in our LCAP plan, I've approved actions like this in our African-American success framework, I've approved it. CCSE'S plan, I've approved a lot of this stuff. So I just don't understand where we're getting to at this moment. It is, is what we're saying, what are we taking out or how are we just going to do it differently? Like for me, the only new thing that I would really like to see happen is professional development collaboration time, right? Even in our LCAP plan, we have, we've set aside fundings for professional learning communities, right? Or conferences or meetings, because community is kind of a bigger word. But the, the issue is just, how are we going to get there? It's, it feels like we're rephrasing the same words with different buckets, different brackets, but like, like, all of this excites me, but what's new about any of it?
Nothing's new and that's the point. So the, again, the first and most important piece of strategic planning is the community engagement piece. And it is to find out from folks what's working, what's not working and what they want more of. And so one, we wanted to bring this back to you all as the board of directors so that you can see what the community is saying, right? And so some of you might know and feel familiar and others of you might be like, oh, I didn't, you know, my constituents haven't told me this. Or because of the fact that we have two new board directors, it could be new for them. And so a part of this exercise really was to be transparent and to share with you all what we got from those engagement sessions, both in 21 and on, but particularly over the five ones that we just did and the survey. The other part was to be able to hear how you all respond and react to it because ultimately we need a strategic plan and we need pillars and priorities that resonate with our community, but also resonate with the board because you guys are going to be the ones that are working with me to make sure we actually move to operationalize the plan. The plan cannot be all of these different little sub bullets, right? We're going to have to narrow them. And so we wanted to show you the themes and show you what goes under those themes. So you can see if there's anything that you feel like is really super important to you as a board director. It's not going to mean we're going to silence the voice of the community, but this is our first time, mine and Jill's first time, actually interacting with you all with these themes, even if you've seen it in previous engagements or for different plans.
Thanks, Superintendent. I see Director Shinowski's hand up. Before I call on Director Shinowski, just really quickly. I'd say for me, the theme of local equity plans and the broad array of different diverse stakeholder groups that were called out, as well as the proactive, the call for proactive things like, you know, provide professional support for screening for autism, dyslexia and ADHD, right? Some of those invisible disabilities. I think it's, that is something that, you know, when we talk about our sped issue, sometimes it's reactive, but that's something that I see proactive. And then, you know, the call out to just neurodiverse learners for gender expressive youth. That, that feels new to me. So I think like broaden the definition of equity, look at what other districts like OUSD have done and make sure that those equity plans are encompassing of all of our various diverse populations. And I see Director Shinowski raised her hand. So thank you, Director Shinowski. Sorry, I didn't call on you earlier.
No, it's okay. I was actually responding to Director Babbitt's comments and then the response, I just, I'm excited to have a strategic plan that pulls all of these things together. Because I agree with Director Babbitt, like I've seen all of these things, even in my short tenure as a school board director. And I'm like, it seems so scattered. So I really hope that the strategic plan can actually pull all this together in a way that gives us the clarity we need and, and some clear metrics. So that we're really understanding what are we hitting and what are we not hitting? Rather than, it sometimes feels like, it's like we're looking at this plan and we get data associated with this plan, and then we look at a different plan and we get data associated with that different plan. And it just feels challenging for me to understand what's working, what's not working in really concrete ways. So I, I guess I agree with Director Babbitt about the repetition and I'm excited that we can pull it all together. So I just wanted to express that excitement. Thank you.
And, and part of the reason why I showed you all that example of LAUSD is not because I'm from LA and I rep LA hard. But because it is a good example of what a final product can look like. Believe it or not, it took LAUSD about three years to do their strategic plan. And they started with pages and pages and posters, a post of feedback and, and documents and comments that they had to then narrow down to what I showed you in that previous slide of five pillars, right? And what was it, 20 priorities? And so a part of also sharing this with you all is because you also are not only our thought partners, but our accountability partners. And when we come back to you and to the community with a narrowed down set of pillars, if you will, we want you to know what the community says. So you can say, hey, you missed that, or that's not the exact representation, or we want you to say a little bit differently. So again, you engaging in these and us hearing you respond is important, but also you seeing what your constituents said, not just in 2021, what they're still saying now is going to be important. what they're still saying now is gonna be important because we're gonna come back with something way more uh defined and refined. And we want you to be able to give some thoughtful feedback to that.
Thank you, that's helpful. And so then what would be the the timeline for completion of a strategic plan? How many times will you go back to the community? How many times will you then come back to the board, um, just so we can wrap our mind around that? And if you already shared it, please share it again.
I haven't. So this is why I said it's not gonna be a regular presentation. I was ready for you all. So this is a lot more like how we would do kind of a study session. I can't advance the slides that fast. Can you go to slide fifty? So on slide fifty, what you're gonna see is um our proposed timeline with a big fat asterix at the top. Because this is, you know, I told you LAUSD took three years, it shouldn't take us that long. Our goal, uh, Vice President Brown, is to have our strategic plan finalized by fall twenty twenty four to the beginning of next year. And with ready to be implemented and launched by spring twenty twenty five. It could be before that, but we want to give ourselves a little bit of time to do it. If you, is it, are you on fifty? Oh, so, um, sorry. What we um have on our slide, as soon as we get to it, we had animation and everything for you all. So it took a while, it's gonna take a while, sorry. There it is. So um there you will see the the outline of our timeline. Again, in the fall, we started reviewing and analyzing data trends. We spent time in January synthesizing feedback and findings. Um, and now we're starting to move towards identifying pillars at the first and then priorities, which is why we're asking you to kind of respond to these things. We'll move into identifying measures and metrics and starting to engage our community in the design of the graduate profile and then draft a strategic plan in May. What you cannot see um very clearly because it's, go ahead and click it, Jill, this is fancy. Throughout the entire process, we will be engaging the community. And a lot of times for, you see that, you saw that? Okay, she didn't see it. Typically, what you'll see is the community engagement comes at the beginning and at the end, right? It's beginning for input and at the end for response. What we're saying is throughout this entire process, she wasn't impressed. Throughout this entire process, we will be going back and forth with the community and sharing highlights and updates. So when we get to the part where we're identifying strategies, we'll be engaging our community in the strategies that we identify to match the priorities and the pillars. To the point that uh Director Brown, Director Babbitt made, um, there's a lot of this is already in the number of our current plans. And so we might be looking at our current, we will look at our current plans, maybe pull some strategies. But whatever we do, we're gonna ask our our constituents, like, is this right? Is this what you were thinking? Does it make sense?
Thank you, I appreciate that. And and while you're pulling um strategies from other plans, um, which I think is is great, because we shouldn't reinvent the wheel. Also, the idea around metrics as well. So I I love the conversation about the graduate profile, that's great. But um it is not, to me, it is not um a the best metric to see if we are doing what we are supposed to do for kids. And I'm not saying that you said that, I'm just putting my own um thoughts out there. But there are already metrics uh that are within our plans. And so just making sure that we utilize those, because folks, and you all are the folks, have taken a long time to ensure that those are created. Um, and there's been thoughtful engagement there already. So when we get into the conversation about metrics, I want to ensure that if we're using those plans, we're using the associated metrics as well.
Director Babbitt and then um Associate Superintendent Superintendent, are you, is your intention to finish the rest of the slide deck?
Here is exactly what's happening, so it's fine.
Thank you. One thing I would like to make sure is key is um whatever we do has an outcome of raising the level of expectations for our students as well as uh, and when I say raising the level of future for our students, I don't mean the students. I mean educators' expectations for our students, right? Having a a higher threshold for really defining excellence, right? Really defining um what it means to believe in your students. Not necessarily, oh, we love our students, oh, we we support all our students. But you don't show that if you don't really teach to a level that requires more of them, right? That requires an expectation, um, that requires that you're okay picking up the phone and calling these students' parents to really talk about their education, like as the main educator um at any level. Really truly responsible for um how the student is grasping the information that you're presenting. Because you are using the differentiated learning strategies, right? Like you're, and so so much of what research says, why we have a threshold of achievement gap, just starts with basic expectations, right? Just seriously low expectations. And so what I um would also like us to strongly consider is raising our um GPA for graduation and our graduation profile from a one point oh. I mean, I think as a district, we're already starting off saying low expectations are okay, if you can graduate with a D. And many of our other districts neighboring us do not allow students to graduate high school with a D. And so our graduation rates are extremely high, but our threshold is extremely low. And so I think just really getting to that level of expectations from our, for ourselves, what are we as a board gonna be accountable for policy wise, going down, is gonna make the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Were you about to say something? So um can you go to thirty five, please? I really also wanted to just, I know we're done, we're almost done. And we did get a lot of feedback from you all around the community feedback, so thank you for that. Something else that happened, I I said I was gonna reintroduce strategic planning to Berkeley. And that is because I know that um I think around the twenty twenty one school year, you all, or at least three of the five of you all, we have two new board directors, welcome, started to embark in the creation of a strategic plan. Um, and you did that in consultation uh with Pam Hurt, I believe it was. I think she changed her name. I think she, anyway, Ms. Pam. So um and and in that process, I know that Pam engaged you all individually for uh some time. Also, she engaged cabinet as well as the then superintendent. And uh she asked you all about the priorities, et cetera, that you would like for the district. And from those, she came up with in partnership with um Dr. Brent Stevens, the previous superintendent, five focal areas that one could also describe as pillars, if you're using the um LAUSD language. And I wanted to um reintroduce those to you all and introduce those to our two new board directors. Similarly, just to see if these are still the things. We don't have to do that all this evening, but I wanted to make sure I point your attention to it. The five focal areas um are academic excellence and equitable outcomes for all. And then you all engaged in trying to describe what that looks like and gave four descriptions. The next one is structured collaboration and engagement. Similarly, you gave um some descriptions of what that means or looks like in BUSD. Wellness and belonging with two descriptors, fiscal stability and responsibility.
Sorry, Superintendent, uh, for the folks in the back, if we could keep the noise down so we can finish the presentation, that'd be great.
And then modern and efficient processes and systems. Again, for time reasons, we don't need to hear from you on all of those right now. But it is a similar question, though slightly different, which is, is there something you would add or something missing? Are these still the things? Because again, she was able to sit with each of you individually to ask you to respond to these particular focal areas. So we will like to get some feedback, well, we we would like to get some feedback from you all on these as well as the board. These were not from community, these were straight from you all and staff. And again, those are gonna be pulled together to inform the pillars that we identify and bring back to you and the community.
Can I share? I would say that, first of all, thank you for that. Um, I know that the direction that I gave from the dais was that we do in some way include these, especially because of all of the work that it took to get these um ready and prepared. And I wanted to make sure that we honored that work. So thank you for hearing that direction and for including it in today's presentation. I will say that a lot of this uh really came out of the work of staff. So we as board members, you know, engaged and and gave direction, but really it was the hard work of staff. Now, I know that there are some folks who have changed in those roles. There is also even a new department even. Um, and so while we do, I think it would be in our best interest to keep those. I think the revisiting of these pillars or these focus areas um with staff, with current staff and new staff would be important to see if that is something that uh still is um informing their work. Because the entire focus around doing this was to help support the work that they are doing. And so um whereas, you know, it's great to hear from the board and what we want, I think we definitely need to have staff be able to weigh on those specific pillars, just to see if that's where they currently are.
Thank you. And I would say if there's an opportunity Superintendent for us to engage, like, you know, hard to answer on the fly right now, like remember all the, you know, all the conversations around this. But I think if there's a way to engage the board, um, you know, whether it's like a survey or, you know, in our one-on-ones with you about these themes, I think that would be great. And I do agree with what Vice President Brown said, that the staff did uh play a heavy role in putting these together. And so it would be worth visiting with some of the new newer staff members that are part of the district now.
Slide forty three. So uh really quickly, our next step is to synthesize uh and add your feedback to the feedback we've gotten from our educational partners. And that's our families, our community members, our staff and our students. Um, and come back with some um uh proposals for what our pillars will be. Again, it could be those five buckets that I just shared, those five focus areas. But it could be named or phrased differently. So we'll be bringing those back to you and to the community, as well as starting to outline some priority areas to go underneath those pillars or buckets. We're also gonna begin to um draft some strategies and actions. We're gonna work on metrics and measures and we're gonna continue to work on building out the profile of the BUSD graduate. Not all at once, but just wanted to let you know that those works are happening next. But also, yes. Oh, but also to let you know that it's also started. So specifically, if you think about the goals, there's already been some work uh looking at our current LCAP goals um and asking the community of those thousand or so folks who responded to the survey. We did ask them questions about the LCAP goals themselves, just to get a sense of um are those still goals that the community feels are relevant? And a good majority of folks did, of those one thousand two hundred and sixty respondents. There were no goals where the majority of folks said that these are no longer the right goals. And so doesn't mean that the goals as written or as are, as written or as are. That doesn't mean that the goals will be those exact goals, but it does give us some input and some thought that as we can, as we work to draft goals for the strategic plan, um, that can really inform the work that we do.
Thank you. And then I think last comment from, uh, okay, uh, comment from Vice President Brown and then Director Babbitt, and then we'll move on to the next item.
The, uh, thank you again. The only other thing that um I wanted to ask about, or maybe find a place to include, there's a lot of, um, you know, just in looking at these uh focus areas or these pillars, there's a lot of uh focus around systems, around um evaluations, around uh integration of programs and resources. But there isn't a lot of conversation on um on uh personnel, um, goals or um things that we could add. And so when I think about in, when I think about improving academic outcomes, it is, I appreciate the conversation around curriculum, but it it is also about developing habits of mind. And so I'm wondering how that uh will kind of go into um this conversation. I'm not sure if it's through the vehicle of the graduate profile, that we also develop the uh habits of mind or or educator profile or or something like that, that helps us uh to have a helps us to de- develop a place to align our thinking. I think it falls in line with what Director Babbitt was saying around um kind of raising the bar of expectations for our students, but also raising the bar of expectations um for educators. I think that um when we talk about uh providing rigorous and relevant instruction, we also need to provide like a framework or a a roadmap for that to be able to happen. And so um I don't know where it will fall under this plan, if it is its own um entity. But I think that we did, we need that outside of the professional development opportunities that we give. Like we need a, this is BUSD's approach to teaching and learning, this is how we're going to do it, this is what it's going to look like. And every single educator within our system is doing this, no matter if they're teaching kindergarten or if they're teaching eighth grade. And so um I would really like to see some alignment there um as part of like our educational plan.
And that is why we're here this evening, sharing this with you all. Real talk, because um, you know, if you think about the the other themes, you're right, you didn't see or hear that, right? There are definitely places around the instructional components, we can talk about instructional framework. But I also heard you and um Director Babbitt talk about um staff. Um, and again, using LA, you, LAUSD as an example, they pulled that out as one of their pillars, investing in staff. And it wasn't just PD, but it's high performance standards for staff, right? It's staff wellness, it's diverse workforce. So again, if we had just left it as as it was and just took the feedback from previous, we probably wouldn't have heard that feedback and that idea. Um, and so we can think about a way, if if it definitely echoes, and it definitely echoes with me as a superintendent um and and the person who knows that who's in front of the babies every day, really, really matters. This is now good feedback, because we can think about that as we come back to you all with some pillars and priorities to make sure we prioritize the development um and support of our amazing professionals who work with our students.
Thank you, and Director Babbitt?
Yes, I just, can we go back to slide forty, I believe it is? It's the one that has five themes and areas of focus on it. I think that this slide is um is really a good diagram of the themes from the first strategic plan and then how you're tying it into to the pillars of what you've recently heard from the community. So I just really wanted to um make sure that this was seeing the bars in that, in their way. And to say um, like, under here, if we had kind of more specifics to what uh Director Brown is saying as, or Vice President Brown is saying as the roadmap for what that looks like, right? Like fiscal stability and responsibility, align and evaluate our resource allocation. How does that also kind of tie into the updates for the policies and procedures that need, right? Making sure we have the right uh staffing and resources in the back office, making sure we have those roles of accountabilities underneath all of those. So I really um want to just call this slide out as a, as a really way that if under that, we could see the roadmap or that framework. That would, and you know, those diagrams, and then you click on it and then you go in and you see what's, you know, how you're gonna get there.
Digital strategic plan, we're not doing the old school big book.
Yes, definitely digital.
Digital interactive. Appreciate your time and appreciate your feedback. Not sure how useful was to you all, but it was super useful for us to hear your feedback and how you respond uh to um these themes. And also in in a lot of ways, giving us some some insight and some ideas of how we can expand the themes. Um, I will be sharing with you all some examples of strategic plans from other districts, again, just so you could visualize the various ways that it could be organized. LAUSD was just the model. But the goal is to really create the roadmap where anybody who was a part of Berkeley Unified knows what we do and how we do it and are able to answer all of those questions around organizational clarity in service of um really realizing our mission for all of our students. On slide fifty one, you'll see some of the folks who have been um awesome enough to work with us in the development of the strategic plan. It is no small feat. And so I appreciate all of our partners, our community partners first and foremost, but also Ms. Natasha Berry, who worked with our district for a long time and created lots of plans. And so she gives out a historical institutional context. We work with Pam again, who's been working with us with the structure and the creating of a strategic plan. Joel Rabine, who is um working with us on feedback analysis and synthesis and our LCAP plan. And we're gonna have to have someone who helps with the final drafting and the beautiful graphics. And whoever that is, we don't know who they are yet, but if you're out there, we're looking for you. Um, and we'll be coming back to you all and to our community periodically to give you updates on this process.
I just wanna say, which will include um the updates on the LCAP. So we're using a lot of this information as we're working to draft the LCAP because of the timing issues, the LCAP is gonna come before the strategic plan. But we're gonna be in communication so that we can make sure that that lines up with any potential pillars that and priorities that we're identifying.
Thank you so much, Associate Superintendent and Superintendent for Mortal. And colleagues, we have another presentation coming up next, which is um presentation fourteen point two. Before we move there, can I entertain a motion to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes to eleven fifteen?
I will move to extend the meeting. I will move to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen.
Thank you. Moved by Director Babbitt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mustaius, can you call the role, please? Yes, Director Chang?
Hi.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes, within readiness. Matt, may I ask a question to the chair? When we get to action items fifteen point one, are those time sensitive? Time certain, rather?
No, they're not.
Okay, then yeah, my vote is yes.
And President Vasilev?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And did you call Director Shunovsky? I'm so sorry, Director Shunovsky. Director Shunovsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the motion passes, meeting's been extended, and now we will move on to item fourteen point two. And who will be introducing this item, Superintendent?
Mr. Steve Collins is going to come up and introduce the presentation, just as sustainability part two. You might recall that our team came a couple of meetings ago to talk about some of our sustainability efforts in BUSD. And they're here to share more information about other sustainability efforts here in our district specific to transportation.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Board. So I'm Steve Collins, the manager of Buildings, Grounds and Sustainability, and I have with me Sophia Pelts, our sustainability coordinator. So tonight, we're giving you guys a presentation on safe routes to school, which is a major component in our, the transportation section of our sustainability plan. Oh, there it goes. So Safe Routes to School is a part of the Alameda County Transportation Commission. They've been around for about fifteen years. They've been working for us, with us for fifteen years. They work with all students in Alameda County, and their goal is to promote safe and sustainable ways to get to school. So they promote walking, biking, and carpooling, and taking the bus, and all that kind of good stuff. I'm doing most of just the setup here at the beginning and then handing it off to the person that's done all the work on this, who is Sophia.
We do it together.
So the main goals of the Safe Routes to School program is for the health of everybody, walking and biking is good for everybody, less pollution, the environment, you know, less pollution for the environment, community building, getting out and biking and walking together as a group to school and all that kind of good stuff.
Yeah, so this fall, the sustainability staff shared a survey with site leaders to be disseminated to BUSD parents and caregivers on transportation. We know we cannot manage or improve what we don't measure, which has been kind of talked about throughout all of tonight. And so understanding how BUSD families get to and from school is really essential to us improving and expanding modes of transit here at Berkeley Unified. So our survey received three hundred and seventy-eight responses from BUSD families. And out of that, out of that group, seventy-one percent of respondents reported using sustainable modes of transit, which includes walking, biking, carpooling, using AC transit and our district's school bus system. And so while, while that we know that's a small percentage of the community, the data really shows that there is a tremendous commitment to sustainable transportation. And I also just wanted to highlight some key findings from that survey, which is travel time, convenience, and traffic safety are really some of the key, most important factors when parents and caregivers decide how to get their children to school. Organized walking and biking, walking school buses would encourage more families to walk and bike to school. And if you're not familiar with that term, it really means that groups of students meet up in a central location and are guided by adults to school. And there was also a really high praise of the current school bus system and the current school bus staff. That was really exciting to hear. And we're really lucky to have longstanding partnerships with various departments internally and externally. So the transportation department here at Berkeley Unified and also organizations such as Safe Roots to School that contribute to expanding sustainable transportation at BUSD. And this chart just really highlights the different stakeholders and offerings that BUSD students have to engage with walking, busing, and biking to school. And so I wanted to start with kind of calling out the Alameda County Safe Roots to School program, and they designate a district coordinator who works with myself and school site leaders to offer three annual events, which are Walk and Bike to, oh, which are Walk and Roll to School Day, which was in October, the Golden Sneaker Contest, which is actually happening now, and Bike to School Day, which happens in May. And so in addition to engaging all the schools in those three annual events, there are some other offerings that Safe Roots to School offers, such as the free bike repair clinics, biking education, which includes hands-on biking lessons for students, and technical assistance, which includes safe biking and whopping and walking maps to those specific schools that request them. And so I'm sure you guys are all interested in how many of our schools actually participate in this amazing program. And we are excited to say that all of our schools participate in the program. Prior to COVID nineteen and school closures, all Berkeley schools were participating in the three annual events that I called out earlier. However, kind of, we know that school closures caused that to be a challenging. So currently, forty-seven percent of BUSD schools participate in all three annual events. However, twenty-six percent participate in two annual events and twenty-seven percent participate in one annual event. But we are really making a strong effort to engage those schools that are no longer engaging in all three annual events. And so this next slide is a picture of the bike repair clinic coming to Longfellow Middle School. So I'm sure we've all experienced having a bike that maybe is broken down or is in our basement somewhere. And so that's where the bike repair clinic really comes in handy. This offering helps students and staff get on their bikes and learn valuable maintenance skills, such as fixing a flat tire or tuning up their brakes. And this service is available to all schools that request a visit. So I'm really excited to be sharing this to anyone watching out there. The service is available to you and your school community. And this next slide represents Bike to School Day. And this is what Bike to School Day looks like for a lot of BUSD families. Adults often ride alongside students, and it becomes a really awesome community building activity. Some of you guys have probably come out to the school sites on this day. And I know families look forward to it each year. So in the past ten years, Berkeley Unified has won twice the highest participating school in the Golden Sneaker Contest throughout the whole county. So we want to celebrate that. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with the Golden Sneaker Contest, it's a classroom challenge that encourages students, parents, teachers, and administrators to take healthy modes of active and shared transportation to school. And so the classes with the highest percentage of students doing that win. And so they keep track of that through a tally system. And the class that wins or has the highest percentage of active and shared transport usage will receive a Golden Sneaker shoelaces and trophy. And the sneakers are actually gifted from players who are on the Warriors basketball team. So that's pretty fun. So the picture on the left is BAM students celebrating with their sneaker, and that was just this past school year. And the picture to the right is Malcolm X Elementary School celebrating in two thousand seventeen. And as of this year, Berkeley High School now participates in the Safe Roots to School program. And it's led by a student coordinator. And this is really exciting news because as we all know, Berkeley High has a huge student population. So the student coordinator engages in monthly meetings with Safe Roots to School staff to plan annual events such as reboot your commute, which is a campaign encouraging sustainable modes of transportation. And so in this picture, you can see the Berkeley High Green Team, and they are keeping track and tally with stickers of how students got to school that day and also have incentives such as tote bags and other things to get students jazzed about it. And then this year, the sustainability team and the climate literacy staff are working together to, like I said earlier, expand interest in the Safe Roots to School program and just let people know what it is. So we've created a quarterly newsletter, which we, you know, we always try to shout out Safe Roots to School programs and offerings on that newsletter. And we are also working to create classroom presentations that directly make connections between climate change and transportation. As we know, you know, driving vehicles is one of the key greenhouse gas emissions, one of the main causes of it. We also have a task force meeting with the Safe Roots to School Site Coordinator and monthly meetings with the Safe Root Site Coordinator, the Climate Literacy Teacher on Special Assignment, and myself. And so that really concludes our overview of the Safe Roots to School program. And now we want to open it up to any questions you might have for us about, about it. Yeah.
I definitely have a lot of questions, but I'll defer to my colleagues first. Colleagues, do any of you want to start?
Yo, jam, go.
You ready? It's your jam too, Director. It's a shared jam. So my my questions have to do with, I know that prior to the pandemic, there were pretty regular parent champion meetings. And it seems, just observationally, that the program hasn't always been updating or like recruiting new parent champions. What efforts are there right now to kind of recruit parent champions and restart those parent champions? And I'm happy to hear at the high school, they're not parent champions, that they're student champions, to be able to reboot kind of those regular meetings and to make sure that before, you know, we start those meetings at the beginning of the year, that we're recruiting a new crop of parent and student leaders. So what kind of outreach is there to the principals at the beginning of the year?
That's a really great question. We have done outreach to principals at the beginning of the year, sharing information about the program, and a lot of that information has been coordinated through the Safe Roots to School Coordinator, Sheila, who I'm sure some of you are familiar with. But we really want to streamline that so it can be better communicated. So I think that's part of the goal of the newsletter is to share that information and share, you know, a description of what a coordinator would look like, or like a parent champion or teacher champion, and advertise that. So we've thought about it and we will continue to kind of advance that work through some of the things that I just mentioned here.
And might I be able to make a suggestion that could possibly help with recruitment, like at welcome events, like back to school events? I think that's a great opportunity for the program to be able to recruit a new crop of champions. Another question that I have has to do with bike racks. So I've heard from the middle schoolers, now that additional racks, I think, were added at King, but like Willard, I've heard from some families that the racks are currently pretty full. And then it discourages sometimes students from biking when they don't have a place to lock their racks. So how often are we just evaluating at the, especially at the secondary level, at the middle school and at the high school, the condition of the racks? Because I think that when those fill up sometimes and students don't have a safe place to park their bikes, they're less likely to bike. So how to, can you just like explain kind of how we work with facilities to ensure that we have enough bike parking on campuses?
You want to take?
So the evaluation piece, I don't know. So I'll say for many years, the Safe Routes to School Coordinator kind of worked straight with parent liaisons at each school. And then every once in a while, I would get a request to install bike racks, right? And then the city had a program where they installed bike racks also using grant money that they get from Safe Routes to School. So, so as far as evaluating whether or not bike racks are full, there's not currently a program in place for that. As far as, if we get any kind of requests, I'll walk with the site, we'll walk the site and look at a location for them, and we can, we install bike racks on a regular basis.
Okay, I'll let you know there's a request from Willard. So and then I have one more question, and then I'm going to turn it to Director Shunovsky and then you, Vice President Brown, Director Shunovsky, she had a question. My next question is about reboot your commute. I loved hearing about that event, very exciting. How do we work with AC transit to make sure that we're supporting like their equity programs at the secondary level and partnering with their community engagement staff on like transit week, you know, events that they might have to be able to promote transit at Berkeley High?
I would say that in the past has mostly been done through the sites. And I think the sites are aware of if they're eligible for like free or reduced AC transit passes. But I think, you know, that's one thing that I would love to incorporate into, you know, next, next school year is advertising that and making more connections between the public transit offerings. Especially at our high school, because I'm sure a lot of the high schoolers use that mode of transit.
Yeah, I think we could do a little more research and get back to you on that. I would imagine OFI has something to do with that, giving out bus passes and things like that to families. So we can, we can get back to you on that.
Great, thanks. And then I'll go to Director Shunovsky. I know she has some questions. And then Vice President Brown, and we'll circle back to the rest of the directors. Thank you. So Director Shunovsky?
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you for coming and giving the presentation. So I was lucky enough to be a parent at Malcolm X for nine years. And we had rolling drop-offs that were just really well-coordinated. It was really safe when parents were dropping their kids off at school. And then my son went to King Middle School, and then we got rezoned, and my daughter now goes to Willard. And it's like a totally different kind of crazy experience, the high school too. And I'm just wondering, it always feels really unsafe to me around these other schools. Like, is there any thought about expanding these like rolling drop-off systems and zones by our schools so that we can ensure that kids aren't, you know, that parents are not double parking and blocking streets and that kids aren't sort of darting between cars to get to school? I know it's a tall order. I just wonder if we have any plans. Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I think, I think that's something that feedback that we've heard from, from many parents and something that we want to continue to work with specific school sites to improve. I think because every school site has a different system, it has been a little bit difficult to streamline those practices. But I would love to work with our Safe Roots to School Coordinator to figure out how to streamline that so that, you know, we have a successful model for what safety looks like when we're doing the drop-off, especially if we're encouraging more families to walk and bike and how those two things intersect with each other, like heavy traffic during drop-off time. And also if we're encouraging people to walk and bike to school, how, how we encourage that safety. I think that's really important.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then Vice President Brown?
Yes, thank you all so much for your presentation and welcome back. It's good to see you. I want to give another appreciation first. It was great to see all of the photographs of the students getting their bikes repaired, taking safe routes to school. I even saw my very own cousin in one of those photos. So that was very sweet, something to talk about over a family dinner. Anywho, so I wanted to ask about our schools, you mentioned, I think it was on slide number six, some of our schools who were participating in one or two of the annual events and that there was kind of some efforts to get, get more participation. And so I just wanted to quickly ask about what those efforts look like and what we could do to support that.
Yeah, I, those efforts kind of, you know, were mentioned on slide eleven, which, you know, are the quarterly newsletters also working, you know, messaging to the principals because there are, I'm sure there are newsletters I've heard and I've, you know, asked, requested to get information out on the school-specific newsletter. So I think that's a great way to encourage dissemination of information. And, and so those are kind of the methods we've tried so far. And, and so those are kind of the methods we've tried so far to expand our, the opportunity for people to participate in these offerings. And these, you know, things that we've implemented are relatively new. We just started the quarterly newsletter in November. And so I'm, I'm really excited to see kind of how, you know, who it, who it reaches and how we can begin to improve that.
Okay.
We do plan on for the beginning of next school year, going to the earliest staff meetings, trying to get in with the principals, maybe even some PTA meetings to really promote these things.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Two more. I love the bike lessons. I love the bike repair opportunities. And I'm wondering if we will or have thought about connecting with programs like Bike Match and Free Bikes for Kids and Good Karma Bikes, who provide free bikes for students. Are we, I think that that would maybe not even question, but recommendations that it's a good place to, to find some places for collaboration? Or maybe if the county provided liaison could support us with some of those efforts, that would be really great.
Yeah, I know she's really connected with the community and she probably really knows about those organizations. So we've really leaned on the Safe Roots to School Coordinator to kind of bring us that information and help us disseminate that information within the newsletter that we're creating.
Okay.
But I think that's a great suggestion. I would love to see more of that on our campuses and, and have free bikes available.
Yeah, I would love to see that and not, maybe not just bikes, but roller blades or roller skates. Which one are they?
Skateboards.
Skateboards.
Scooters, yeah.
Yeah.
And helmets.
Yeah, so many different, so many different modes of transportation for our students. But it's really all about access. So ensuring that we can create more opportunities for, for that to be accessible for our students. And then my final question is, I know that after years and years of, of efforts around Safe Routes to Schools, around efforts around other sustainable modes of transportation, that we've definitely helped to improve our city. And so I'm wondering if there has been a way to kind of put all of that data in, into one place? Because I'm sure that we've, you know, reduced our carbon footprint. I'm sure that we've helped to reduce traffic in our, in our city. I'm sure that we've helped to reduce emissions. And I would love to see this information, some data around that and for it to be shared with our mayor and our city council to let them know what we've done in B West D to really support our city, support the sustainability of our city. And I think that we, that should be a place where we're highlighted for our, for our efforts. And so I'd love to see that data and I'd love to see it shared with the city.
Sure.
Yeah, we're, we're currently like synthesizing that information. So I would love to have that, have that out somewhere.
Thank you. And Director Babett?
Thank you for this presentation and for all the time you spend to, to really make this a reality for our students and families. My question is also kind of about the, the future. We know that electric bikes are becoming more and more popular as well as the electric scooters to schools. And I don't think we have enough information on the, the, the rules and laws associated with that. For example, at a certain age, you're not supposed to be on scooters that go a certain speed. And so I think kind of getting ahead of the popularity around electric modes of transportation and really making sure in your newsletters and other communications that our school sites, as well as our parents, really understand the, the laws around that mode of transportation. And also want to really highlight the, the fun of, of Rock and Roll to School Day is also in the prizes, right? It's also in the, the school winning, right? So for example, in March Madness, we're kind of watching like, where are we ranking? So if we could, on a smaller scale, keep it as more of a recurring kind of competition for schools to say, you know, your school improved. It's Rock and Roll to School, this Rock and Roll to School by 15% from last month, right? Like, how can we get that, that number higher? Just to keep the momentum going so that it's like, oh yeah, this is the day we have to do that. But really change it into, this is a part of our lifestyle. And giving that kind of added incentive, I think is just another cool suggestion I would like to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now you will move on to action items, colleagues. We have action item 15.1, 15.2, and 15.3. So who will be introducing this item?
It's the worst thing. Okay. Thank you. So this is approval for the Sunshine or the Successor Agreement initial proposals, which were for their first reading at the last board meeting. And this is the second time they're coming before the board for the board's approval. And the first one, 15.1, is for you, Bud, the, the Union of Berkeley Administrators.
Colleagues, do you have any questions before I call for motion? Seeing no questions, is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Director Babett, seconded by Vice President Brown. Ms. Barrios, can you call the roll, please? Director Chang?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Fasabev?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and Director Shinowski?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to Agenda Item 15.2.
So this is a similar item for the reopeners for the contract between BFT and the district. We are asking for approval. They came for first read at the last board meeting and are back for this time for approval.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza. Colleagues, are there any questions before I call for the motion? No, seeing no questions, can I have a motion to, and a second to approve this item?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Director Chang, seconded by Vice President Brown. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll? Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Director Shinowski?
Oh, you got me this time. Yeah.
And President Fasabev?
Yes.
Now, finally, we'll move on to Action Item 15.3.
Thank you. So this is a document that we unfortunately need to fill out every year nowadays. And this is saying that we have a need to find fully qualified educators through non-traditional routes. So it allows us to be able to use waivers and other processes, including emergency credentials, to be able to fill some of our hard to fill positions.
Colleagues, are there any questions before I call for the motion?
There's a question.
There's a question from Director Shinowski. One second. Director Shinowski?
Thank you. I just wonder, Samantha, sorry, Director Espinoza. Samantha, sorry, it's late. Do we have assurance, like rehire assurance for these emergency hires? Or what happens to the, like, long-term employment in these positions?
Great question. We work with these people when we bring them on board to try to get them as, so that they do hold full credentials. And we do try to retain them every year so that we aren't having to refill the same vacancies every year.
Thank you so much.
Hi, colleagues. Can I get a motion to approve this action item?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Director Babett. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Chang. Ms. Barrios, can you call the roll? Director Chang?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Shinowski?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Fasabev?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, I just want to point out our information items, 16.1, 16.2, and 16.3.
Really quickly, thank you, Ms. Espinoza, for putting this forward as an action item. For me personally, it was important to improve our transparency, specifically for the community around our contract negotiations. And so that is why we see it as an action item this evening. And so I hope that the community will stay informed and engaged with us during this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Babett. And with that, again, I just wanted to point out the information items, colleagues, and please review those when you have a chance, if you have not done so already. And we will move on now to Extended Public Comments. We have 15 minutes of Extended Public Comments. Ms. Barrios, thank you for the cards. Do we have any students in the audience? No students in the audience? Yes. I do not have a student card, Ms. Barrios. This says... Hi, okay, yes, you, you can go first. Mohammed, one second. And so again, we're going to start with speaker comments in person and then we'll move to online comments. We have 15 minutes of public comments. So we'll start with one minute. We'll start with you, Mohammed, and then we will move to the next speakers.
I'd like to ask if I could see the card before I...
These are the three cards that have been provided to me, but do, would you like to, we, we, I don't have a card for you, not, not right now. But you can start your public comment.
... and he would not call and he would like to see it.
Yes.
We typically don't show those with the public, but you have one minute of public comment, so we can...
I'm not the public. I'm Mohammed Delgan, the one who wrote the call.
Been waiting here and he'd like to see his card.
I don't have his card in front of me. We have one minute of public comment. So Ms. Barrios, can you start the clock and you can begin your... I do not have it.
It's here in this building.
Why? See, I think he has a right to see his card.
We would, we would like to hear your one minute of public comment.
I thought that. I thought that the school board might like to have heard from the student who was in charge, who was responsible for organizing the walkouts that brought hundreds of Berkeley High students out of their classrooms. But it's 11 o'clock on a school night and I have IB work. I have IB classes in the morning. So I'll come by next time I'm available. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Christina, followed by Diana and Lucia, and we'll move to online comments after that.
I'm gonna, I'm Lucia, and I would like to say a couple of words because we have been waiting here for hours. You know that he put in a comment card earlier and he was not called. And he's asking you to see it. And I think that the least that you can do is find it in the back or behind your desk or whatever you see. And I also just want to say, I've been coming to these meetings for quite a while now. And usually these feel incredibly uplifting and we are proud of the work that we've been doing in supporting our students and our teachers. I think that it's something that you are proud of doing. But what has happened here tonight, watching people use anti-Semitic slurs, watching you silence, that's the president of the Muslim Student Association at Berkeley High School. He just organized a walkout that was attended, a beautiful mural that's been defaced. It was out for 24 hours and it was defaced. And you are silencing him. And what I want to understand, I'm Palestinian and black. I see all women of color. You should know what it feel, you should know...
Thank you very much for your comments.
You were women of color. Do not be complicit in what we are watching here today. Why am I the only one still in this room? You think this is unacceptable?
Thank you very much for your comment. We have...
And it is not okay. You, you owe him an apology and you owe him his card.
We have one minute of public comment per speaker. And next I have Diana.
Constituent to, to Councilmember Laura Babett, Pethija, Mike, I'm asking you, please, have, show them humanity.
Thank you.
And he's not going home. This is unacceptable and we will remember.
We have another comment from Diana. Is Diana in the audience?
She left.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move...
Who had also been waiting here for hours, waiting for Mohammed to speak.
Thank you so much. We have, if you didn't get to finish your public comments, please email them to the Board of Education. Next, we have four more comments online. And so Ms. Barrios, we'll start with Marco Escondolas, followed by Kim Friedman.
Hello, board members. I want to thank you for your time and this long evening. We really appreciate you taking the time to listen. This school district has a systemic anti-Jew problem. Families are transferring out of the district because they don't feel safe. We heard a wonderful strategic plan earlier this evening, so I want to ask, what's the strategic plan to address this issue? Request number one, commission an outside audit, track the metrics, see if we're actually following the nondiscrimination policy such as Board Policy 410. Second, liberated ethnic studies. These days, almost any classroom in the district has become fair game for the personal campaigns of some teachers who are anti-Jew and anti-Israel. Well, every teacher has their professional role, receiving their salary from our public funds. The classroom is not their own personal domain to push their own hateful agenda. Number two, I'm asking the board what checks and balances you're going to put in place to foster a safe learning environment for the full diversity of all students and making clear that our personal First Amendment rights at home don't extend to professional duties in the classroom. Third, basic expectations.
Thank you very much, Marco. If you were not able to finish public comments, please email them to the Board of Education. And next, we will move on to Kim Friedman, followed by Riva, and our last public comment will be from Sahar Habib Ghazi.
Good evening. I have two points I'd like to make. First, I can't emphasize enough that everyone attending a public meeting is entitled to a voice. And adults using tactics such as we saw this evening, including intimidation and bullying, particularly towards students who are bravely speaking out in the name of their safety, is entirely inappropriate. Additionally, this is a school-oriented meeting, a forum where we have an opportunity to model how adults conduct ourselves during conflict. Are we wanting to teach our students that the answer is bullying? Or rather, can we be bold enough to respectfully and respectfully listen to one another with opposing opinions and better understand one another? And I hope that the board can keep that in mind with future meetings. Second point is that leadership and administration needs to speak out and clearly clarify First Amendment rights in a public school setting. There are laws in place to protect students and against bias, hate, and propaganda. And the leadership and administration needs to ensure they are clarifying the law, law, as not doing so is putting both teachers and students...
Thank you for your comments. Next, we will move on to Riva, and our last public commenter will be Sahar Habib.
Riva declined to be promoted, so we have Sahar.
Okay, we have Sahar. I still see Riva's hand raised? Maybe not. Okay, Sahar, you will be our final public comment.
Thanks. I'm a mom of a student at King. And I was just heartbroken to see what happened to Muhammad today. I helped him write his comment card. I included a comment on it, saying that he was the president of the Muslim Students Association. And I'm appalled as a Muslim American. I've been attending these meetings for weeks. I have never heard of a student not be given space to speak. And I did see whatever happened today in the silencing. And I wanted to talk about the harm that's being caused by people in that room, which I was in up until an hour ago, who have said that our only, our focus on the occupied people of Palestine is a distraction from the real issues being faced by students of color. I want to remind everyone that the US-funded war in Palestine is very much impacts all students of color. After Spanish, the second most common language spoken by our students is Arabic. More than 130 students of ours speak it. And I can assure you, Gaza and the bombs that are being, that we are paying for, that are crushing, killing, and annihilating 31,000 people, including 13,000 children, are very much constantly on our students' minds. Trump, in his victory speech in New Hampshire, called pro-Palestinian supporters jihadists while saying he'd hunt down green card holders attending pro-Palestinian rallies and have them deported. This is the kind of hateful and hostile environment our Palestinian, Arab, Muslim, and allied students, staff, and families have to deal with. And then there are small group of parents who colluded... And then there are small group of parents who colluded with pro-Trump brandeis center to launch false complaints against our beloved teachers of color. This is Berkeley, the first district to voluntarily dissegregate. Now it's a place teachers and students are accused of being anti-Semitic when they put.
Thank you very much for your comments. If you were not, it sounds like you were not able to finish your comments. If you could please email us the rest of your comments to the Board of Education, that would be much appreciated. Board colleagues, we now have an opportunity for extended board member comments. Is anyone, Director Brown, the Vice President Brown?
Yes, I'd just like to let the record reflect. I hear your comments and typically we do not respond to public comment. But I first think that it is appropriate to provide an apology on behalf of our board and on behalf of the district for missing the opportunity to hear from our students, speaker. Our students are the crim de la crim of our school district and any opportunity where we can hear from them, we need to take. And so when those opportunities are missed, it is definitely most appropriate to give an apology. The second thing I'd like to have for a point of record is that although we all are a part of the governing process, I heard you specifically call us out, call a few of us out as individuals who, individuals who actually have no control over that process and no control over the speaker card. And so because I was called out individually, I'd like the record to reflect there there are no doings that I had in that role or my board colleagues and definitely was a place for advocacy to hear the student voice. And so I made the record to reflect that. And thank you for hearing what I said and thank you for allowing us to hear what you shared as well.
Director Chang.
Thank you. Just want to add to that. I hear the frustration for having to wait and and I also apologize for the student not being able to speak earlier. I I do want to say from my observation, what I've learned in the short amount of time about this, that it was an error. So I do want to reflect that there doesn't seem to be something on purpose. Don't see any information or evidence of that or that it was due to any type of reckless carelessness. It was just something that was an error. So I hope he, I hope he does return and and I know he's busy working on his IB homework, which is, he's got lots of work to do, he's up late. So good luck with getting the work done and getting lots of, plenty of sleep, but then please do come back next time. And you will, of course, once you fill out a card, have the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to express my apologies. Again, it was an error that happened and during the break, the student, we did communicate that the student would be allowed to speak first. Please have him email his comments to the Board of Ed and let us know next time so we can allow him to speak at the next Board of Education meeting. Again, thank you for staying so late. And that, Director Babett, did you have any comments? Director Shinowski.
We we may want to consider, since he was also the president of an organization, you know how we have our committees? If we have space specifically held for student organizations or clubs, that may be a way to make sure that doesn't happen in the future because the reality is all students aren't always called ever, right? So it it would be a way to kind of, at least if you're over a entire student body that you have space, especially since most of our committees don't come out all the time. So just a suggestion you can consider.
Yeah, thank you. I'll talk to the superintendent, but thank you for making that suggestion. And with that, I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. The meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education is hereby adjourned at eleven ten PM. Thank you, colleagues.